Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the city of Moreno Valley on August 15th, 2017. Our first item of business tonight is the Fourth of July Essay Contest winners, which will be presented by our mayor, Dr. Exan Gutierrez.
Okay, did you want to join us, Mayor Protanbaka?
Sure.
Okay. And then also, joining us tonight, we have some very special guests for the Essay Contest winners. If you can wave your hand and then come right over here. We have Superintendent of Moreno Valley Unified School District, Dr. Ked Ziora. And then we also have Board Member Jesus Holgin, right there. And then we also have Director of Elementary Education, Carol Boyenheld. And then we also have the Coordinator of Elementary Education from Valverde Unified, Jennifer Doskus. Doskasil. Okay, thank you. Yeah, yeah, join us. Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. As part of the 2017 July Forge Celebration, the city of Moreno Valley, along with the Moreno Valley Unified and Valverde Unified School Districts, conducted an annual Moreno Valley Essay Contest for students to share their creative writing skills using the writing prompt, "Why Do We Celebrate the Fourth of July?" The essays were evaluated on the clarity of the idea, creativity, and the mechanics, which includes grammar, spelling, and punctuation. Our Moreno Valley Unified School District Contest winners are, so if you could, once we announce you and the school, if you could please come up and shake everyone's hand and then stay here for a photo op as well. We have Ella Mae Barrett, or Barrett, from Hidden Springs Elementary School, 3rd grade. No? Okay. Oh, she's not here yet? Okay. Okay. Sarah Abundis from Towngate Elementary School. All right. Congratulations. We also have Karina Savedra from Palm Middle School, 6th grade. If you could please come up. Okay, and then now, our Valverde, oh, let's go ahead and do a photo op. Well, we do have Valverde here, too. Okay, do you want to? Okay, okay, so we'll do, okay, so we'll just call them all up. Okay, we have Christopher Caballero from Triple Crown Elementary School, 4th grade. We also have Jacob Alanis from Valverde Elementary School, 6th grade. Okay, so, let's go ahead and again congratulate these Essay Contest participants and the winners. We encourage, again, all students to keep writing and expressing their ideas. Thank you. Are the parents for the kids here? Well, hopefully they didn't just walk over here, right? Yeah, come on up, please. Okay. Okay, and then also.
Thank you so very much to all the Essay winners. Congratulations again. Next, we have recognition of the Fourth of July Independence Day Parade and Family Fun Fest sponsors, presented by our mayor, Dr. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mayor Protanbaka. So on behalf of the City Council, this is the time where we actually get to recognize our sponsors. And these are sponsors that are really important because without them, we couldn't have this Fourth of July Parade or even the Fun Fest. And just so you know, the Fun Fest costs a lot to do with the stage, also with the bands that we have, the live bands, also the maintenance, all of that stuff. So really, thank you again to our sponsors. So I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of the sponsors for supporting our annual Independence Day Sweet Land of Liberty celebration. And again, July 4th was an outstanding day of events. Tonight, we are going to recognize the following individuals, so if you could please come up when your name is called. We have Le Schwab Tire Center, a Patriot sponsor, and is represented by Frank Hernandez, the store manager. I also want to say that we want to recognize the largest financial sponsors of the events, and that's Sarah's Regis, Duke Realty. Two of our Patriot sponsors are not here this evening. We also want to recognize Waste Management as well. So Waste Management. And Waste Management is our Liberty sponsor, and is represented by, okay, well, okay, Ken Maxi? Ken Maxi?
That'd be me.
Okay, so you're Ken Maxi. I was like, wait a minute. Okay, all right. Skechers also, so let's recognize Skechers. We have the presenting sponsor, and that's Mickey Griffin, the Vice President of Facilities and Maintenance. Mickey? To all of you, your generous sponsorships contributed significantly to the success of Moreno Valley's Independence Day events and are greatly appreciated by the City Council and, of course, our community. So without further ado, let's give them one more round of applause for sponsoring the event. Stepping up. And then.
Okay, are you ready? This year, the city's Fourth of July Parade had 82 entries, from which our parade judges selected winners in 15 categories. Tonight, on behalf of the City Council, I will present each of the parade winners with a trophy. Assisting me with presenting the trophies is Parks and Community Service Staff that coordinated the parade, Kevin Callister, Rudy Rodriguez, and Gina Henderson. As I call each winner forward, Community Service Supervisor Kevin Callister will provide a brief summary of the parade entry. First is the Sweepstakes Award, Cub Scout PAC 210 and Boy Scout Troop 210. Kevin?
Accepting the Sweepstakes Award Trophy on behalf of Cub Scout PAC 210 and Boy Scout Troop 210 is Nick Smith, but you guys can all head on up there. The Sweepstakes Trophy is awarded to Cub Scout PAC 210 and Boy Scout Troop 210 for their fun and enjoyable entry, the Liberty Express Train, which was also located at the Family Fun Fest in the Kids Zone. The Boy Scouts of America is the largest scouting organization in the United States of America, and the Scouts enjoy learning life lessons that build a foundation to embrace opportunity and overcome obstacles in life.
Would you like to say something?
We'd actually just like to thank David and Susan Zeitz. They were instrumental in, by letting us use the train that was part of our float and then run at the park later, later that afternoon. If anybody's interested in scouting, please feel free to look at our Facebook page, Troop 210 Moval, and come out and join us for scouting. We have a good, we have a great time.
Thank you, and once again, congratulations. Next is the Theme Award to the Knights of Columbus. Kevin?
Accepting the Theme Award Trophy on behalf of the Knights of Columbus is Refugio Vega, Jr. The Theme Trophy is awarded to the Knights of Columbus for its parade entry. The Knights of Columbus AF Chalbana Assembly 2306 of Moreno Valley is an organization of Catholic men that provides needed charitable services. The Knights of Columbus is a worldwide organization that has donated more than $1.5 billion to charities and provided over 700 million hours of volunteer service in supporting charities.
We wish to thank the city of Moreno Valley and those who helped us. The ladies, our wives, are the ones who chose the decorations, and they are not here, so we would like to thank them. They were the ones who really won this for us. Thank you very much.
Accepting the Mayor and City Council Award Trophy on behalf of the Morning Rotary Club is Charles James. The Mayor and Council Trophy is awarded to the Morning Rotary Club for its parade entry. Volunteers from Vista del Lago High School, Canyon Springs High School, and the Rotor Act Club created a float on their own interpretation of the parade-themed Sweet Land of Liberty. The float captured the diverse landscapes of America, and the candy lollipops emphasized the sweet land we live in. The center of the float stood Lady Liberty herself, symbolizing our freedom.
I have no idea what to say. I just want to say thank you to the city of Moreno Valley for giving us the opportunity to serve, and these are all the young people from our high school that serve for the community each and every day.
The next category is a Chamber of Commerce Award for March Field Air Museum.
Accepting the Chamber of Commerce Award Trophy on behalf of the Marchfield Air Museum is Museum Director Paul Hammond. The Chamber of Commerce Trophy is awarded to the March, excuse me, Marchfield Air Museum for its parade entry of six vehicles: the M38 Follow Me Jeep, a 1939 Plymouth Staff Car, an M274 Military Mule with a 50-caliber machine gun, the Humvee, a World War II-era Jeep, excuse me, and the museum truck towing the T38 Talon replica airplane. The museum, JR Dosens, carried the Marchfield Air Museum banner, and restoration volunteers drove the vehicles.
Give them applause? Would you like to say a few words?
And I just want to echo museum volunteers. Very few paid staff. We have a small and mighty paid staff and a huge core volunteers, so we could not have done this without the participation of your fellow citizens in this community, because that's where a lot of our volunteers call from. Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along is Outstanding Vehicle, Orange Blossom A's.
Accepting the Outstanding Vehicle Trophy on behalf of the Orange Blossom A's is Gary Strumpf. The Outstanding Vehicle Trophy is awarded to the Orange Blossom A's for their parade entry of three restored Model A Fords. The Riverside Corona Orange Blossom A's is a chapter of the Model A Ford Club of America, the largest automobile club in the world dedicated to one make of an automobile. They are dedicated to the restoration, preservation, enjoyment of Model A Ford vehicles manufactured from 1928 through 1931.
I'd like to invite the folks that are out here to attend any of our club meetings. We are the Riverside Corona Model A Club. We meet the second, the second Monday of each month at Fritz Ford over on the truck side, the second story. We start at 7 o'clock, and one of the things that we really like to do is to do participation for different events like parades. We put our cars on display at many of the different localities, and we'd like to have more members because our, obviously, our membership is starting to dwindle because not everybody knows what Model A is. So thank you.
The next category is Most Humorous to Chick-fil-A.
Accepting the, accepting the Most Humorous Trophy on behalf of the Day Street Chick-fil-A is Jamie Gonzalez. The Most Humorous Trophy is awarded Chick-fil-A for its parade entry of the Day Street Cow riding in that convertible, tossing mini Chick-fil-A cows to lucky parade specters, spectators, excuse me, and encouraging them to eat more chicken.
The next category is Outstanding Commercial Entry, Stater Brothers Markets.
Accepting the Outstanding Commercial Entry Trophy on behalf of Stater Brothers Markets is Pam Booth, District Grocery Supervisor and Christie Gragg, store manager at the Moreno Beach Stater Brothers. The Outstanding Commercial Entry Trophy is awarded to Stater Brothers for its parade entry of the Stater Brothers Tractor Trailer. Stater Brothers has four supermarkets within the city of Moreno Valley.
On behalf of Stater Brothers, I just want to say thank you for the award, and we are privileged to serve and be a part of the city of Moreno Valley. So thank you very much.
The next category is Outstanding Non-Commercial Entry for Patriot Guard Riders.
Accepting the Outstanding Non-Commercial Entry Trophy on behalf of the Patriot Guard Riders is Ray Gold, aka T-Bone. The Outstanding Non-Commercial Entry Trophy is awarded to the Patriot Guard Riders, which have 32 motorcycle riders in our parade this year. This is the Patriot Guards Riders' third consecutive year participating in the Independence Day Parade.
Thank you. I'm usually a loud person as it is. On behalf of Patriot Guard Riders, we are an all-volunteer group as well. We don't, we don't ask for money, and we don't want it, and we're just glad doing it. If you read our signs, our motto is "Standing for Those Who Stood For Us." And I want to also say thank you to the community, because without you, we couldn't do what we do either. You guys are out there supporting us as we are supporting our veterans and our leaders to take care of them, so thank you.
The next category is Outstanding Musical Unit Marching. Moreno Valley Unified School District All District Honor Marching Band.
Accepting the Outstanding Musical Unit for Marching Trophy on behalf of the MBUSD All District Honor Marching Band are band members Farsonen Warisha and Juliana Hurtado. The Outstanding Musical Unit Trophy is awarded to the Moreno Valley Unified School District All District Honor Marching Band, which had 120 performers in this parade this year. The honor band consists of very talented students from the Moreno Valley Unified School District's four high schools, Canyon Springs, Moreno Valley, Valley View, and Vista del Lago. This was the honor band's sixth consecutive year participating in the Independence Day Parade, and they are always a crowd favorite.
Next is the Outstanding Music Unit Stationary for Moreno Valley United Methodist Church.
Accepting the Outstanding Musical Unit Stationary Trophy on behalf of the Moreno Valley United Methodist Church is Len Johnson. The Outstanding Musical Unit Stationary Trophy is awarded to the Moreno Valley United Methodist Church, whose parade entry included a live band called The Joyful Noise. The band sang and played music along the parade route. This was the church's third year participating in the Independence Day Parade.
On behalf of Moreno Valley United Methodist Church, I just want to thank God for the gift of music in our congregation, and thank you to the city of Moreno Valley. It's a great place to live.
Next is Outstanding Musical Unit Youth or Corps, Canyon Springs High School, CA-871 Air Force Junior ROTC.
Accepting the Outstanding Musical Unit Youth or Corps Trophy on behalf of Canyon Springs High School Air Force Junior ROTC is Cadets Alma Del Murro and Amber Brost. The Outstanding Musical Unit Trophy is awarded to the CA-871 Air Force Junior ROTC group from Canyon Springs High School. This program is designed to prepare high school students in becoming effective leaders and productive citizens in a military-based environment.
On behalf of Canyon Springs AFJ ROTC, I would like to thank the city of Moreno Valley for giving us this award, but really, I have to thank the cadets and the parents, because without them, we couldn't have received this award, so thank you.
Next is Outstanding Marching Drill Unit, 17 years or younger, West Coast Westsiders Community Marching Band.
Accepting the Outstanding Marching Drill Unit, 17 years or younger, Trophy on behalf of the West Coast Westsiders Community Marching Band is Corliss and Charlie Preston. The Outstanding Marching Drill Unit, 17 years or younger, Trophy is awarded to the West Coast Westsiders Community Marching Band, which had a total of 38 marchers in the parade this year. The group had three drummers, 31 performers, and four parents who carried the banner and honor guard.
First of all, we would like to thank you. We are the first community marching band started in Moreno Valley. Actually, we, we are the only one that they have in California, and our ages for our community marching band is from age four and up, and we teach everything. Thank you, city of Moreno Valley.
Okay, next, we have Outstanding Marching Drill Unit, 18 years and older, Zoom Dance Studio.
Accepting the Outstanding Marching Drill Unit, 18 years and older, Trophy on behalf of Zoom Dance Studio is Marisol Ramirez. It looks like she has some friends as well. The Outstanding Marching Drill Unit, excuse me, is awarded to Zoom Dance Studio, which features students from the Studio Zumba classes with entertaining and unique styles. This is the third year Zoom Dance participated in the Independence Day Parade, and they always bring a lot of energy.
Well, first, I want to thank to the city, because it's the third year to participate, and we are so happy. I want to thank to all my group, because without them, I can't do anything. Thank you.
Next is the Outstanding Equestrian Group Entry, Wells Fargo Stage Coach.
Accepting the Outstanding Equestrian Group Entry Trophy on behalf of Wells Fargo Stage Coach is Tony Duran. The Outstanding Equestrian Group Entry Trophy is awarded to Wells Fargo Bank for their Stage Coach Parade Entry. It was truly a treat to see a living piece of American history pulled by those horses. This was the, actually, this was not the first year. This is the first year back for quite some time, and we are glad to have them back.
And in behalf of Wells Fargo, we would like to appreciate for letting us be part of the event and the opportunity to serve our community. Thank you.
Next, we have the Outstanding Cultural Entry, Shito Ru Karate.
Accepting the Outstanding Cultural Entry Trophy on behalf of Shito Ru Karate, Sensei James Namak. Sensei James Namakata, and looks like plenty of others. The outstanding cultural entry trophy was a new award established by the parade judges two years ago. The Shito Ruh Karate Kids and Adults Program have been around for five years. The karate style, the group practices is Shito Ruh Karate Do of Kenbu Kai International Federation. This is the group's fourth year participating in the Independence Day Parade.
On behalf of Kenbu Kai Moreno Valley, we'd like to thank the city of Moreno Valley, and most importantly, we'd like to thank our volunteers, our parents of our junior students, and our adult students that were able to participate this year on the Fourth of July. Thank you.
Can we please have Dr. Ketadora and Mr. Alguin to come forward, please? We have one more Fourth of July essay contest winner, Ella Mae Barrett. If you can please come forward. Are her parents here? Would you please come forward? What a great program, right? Well, that concludes our Fourth of July presentations, and it's just amazing how many people participate, and I just want to congratulate everyone that won awards today. Everybody was great, but we were limited in how many people we can select. So, once again, thank you to the parade judges, the parks and community service staff and volunteers, who helped to make this parade a wonderful community event, and thank you to everybody, to the thousands of people that participated in our Fun Fest. Thank you. That concludes a special presentation. Our regular council meeting will resume at 6:00 PM.
Good evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Successor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on August fifteenth, two thousand seventeen, at 6:02 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Mr. Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Pastor O.J. Philpot from Christ Community Church.
Everyone, please stand, face the flag, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Shall we pray? Our Father in Heaven, we look to you for guidance and direction. We realize that we live in a world that has lots of turmoil. We live in a country that has lots of turmoil, and even sometimes that turmoil hits our own city and community. I appreciate those who serve for the betterment of our community, and I ask that you give them guidance, wisdom, and direction. Thank you for not only the board, but all the many volunteers in the valley and the staff members as well. We ask tonight that you direct the decisions that are made, and we thank you that we live in a country where freedom is enjoyed. All these things we ask in your wonderful name, and thank you. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gaiba. Councilmember Marquez. Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Present. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockes-Nares, City Clerk.
Marshall Armin, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kazanowicz, City Attorney.
Michelle Dawson, City Manager.
Steve Hargus, City Manager's Office.
Mike Lee, Climate Development Director.
Mike Lloyd, Interim City Engineer.
Joel Anavero, Chief Police.
Mel Alonso, Parks and Community Services.
Alan Brock, Community Development Director.
Thank you to the staff. Before we hear public comments from this evening, I ask and encourage everyone to participate and to remain respectful towards each other, especially the individuals that are at the podium. I embrace and support the First Amendment right to free speech, including everyone's right to speak at this meeting. Finally, I also ask that speakers bear in mind that comments are limited to three minutes for each speaker, and that you refrain from duplicating comments already made by others, other than to note that you agree with the comment. Also, we have a new system here tonight as far as the dais here. If you do have a request to speak, please, you know, push your request to speak button, and then I have to press it here. That way it can work, just to make sure it works. So, public comments on matters on the agenda will be taken up as the item is called for business between staff's report and city council deliberation. Those wishing to speak on any subject not on the agenda under the jurisdiction of the city council may speak now. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the bailiff, Officer Brooks. And again, there is a three-minute time limit per person. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer. In order to preserve the meeting decorum, council and staff will not respond during public comments. Any council comments or questions to staff will be addressed during the council closing comments. And before we get into that, I also want to mention that the Ironwood Project, I believe that was E2, or was it? It was pulled on by request of the developer. I don't remember if it was E.
It'd be E3.
Okay, E3. It was pulled. However, of course, if you have any public comments, you're welcome to make those during the during the non-agenda items, which will be pretty soon. Also, I'm really excited that we have this new system. You know, a lot of people have been requesting for interpreters, to, you know, professional interpreters. And it's very important to make sure that we have interpreters that, you know, say everything correct because, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, this is a public meeting and public records and everything. So, we do have a company that is helping us with that. So, you know, if you do need an interpreter, you just come up here to the podium, and then we'll have one of the gentleman people in the back help you. Also, we have devices as well for the people in the audience to hear, okay? Entonces, si necesitas un interpreter, tenemos, los tenemos aquí, también tenemos la sistema también, okay? Los aparatos, okay? And I also want to, I just want to really thank Mayor Pro Tembaca for really leading the charge on that. Okay, all right. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak for non-agenda items?
Yes, sir, we have four.
Okay, go ahead and call the three.
Jorge Quintero, José Chávez, Kathleen Dale.
Jorge? Oh, okay.
Buenas noches. Mayor Esteban Gutierrez, concejal, miembro del staff y público que presente.
Good evening, members of the staff. First of all, I would like to thank you. To have all of us interpreters. It's eighty percent Spanish-speaking. It's a good success that we have established. Again, thank you so much for that. So, at this point, I would like to address an issue, and it has to do with my children. My children are now on vacation, and I've seen that at the parks, for example, there's not sufficient parks in our community. So, it would be a good thing so that there is a campaign of some kind. So that this would benefit our community, that uses parks, and whoever wants to. One more thing that I would like to add is that if we could, not only the parks, but also bring in more sports. A lot of the sports and the activities are not free to our community, but if they were free, and also the coaches. I know that at this community center, there's a lot of courses, a lot of sports, a lot of activities, and, you know, it's for a small fee, however. But I would like to add that I think that this would benefit the community. That way, the people can benefit from this. And to implement this because it would help our community so that they won't be in the streets, they won't be doing other things. And this would avoid a lot of the crime and that the young people are involved, and this would ultimately help out the community. So, I don't have a lot of time, but this is what I wanted to address. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jorge. Next speaker is Kathleen Dale.
José Chávez.
Oh, sorry. Mr. José Chávez, followed by Kathleen Dale.
Good evening, city mayor and city councils and all the members staff. I really appreciate the way I see our city as grow up. I'm moving around all over Moreno Valley, and it's getting better. I know it. If they listen to the people, people got the cane and lifting the flag, go for. And anywhere I go, different places, I saw it, the changes they are making, and I'm glad. Because for twenty-four years, it wasn't doing anything. But from now on, we got our flag on again. I was dropping down mine, but I already lifted up again, mine and my house. Because I feel happy for that. So, and I would really like to bring me, to bring attention from, from, what is it? The person that's in charge for the other jobs in the city, engineer. Please, when they do those kind of parks, do not doing sharp corners. It's dangerous. In case one child fall down, it's going to break his head. Make those corners like an angle, no sharp corners. Sharp corners is dangerous, okay? As one thing. The second one is right there in the super, a super. It's one, one driveway, one driveway right there to get into the stores. It's not really, really accessible for disabled wheelchairs. I know on this one, I can drive in the street, but from the others, I really care the others. They, it's very difficult for them. It's the only one we need to be done. And the right side, if you go toward Frederick, Paris Boulevard, and the right side hand, it's only one. That's it. Thanks so much for your listen.
And Mr. Chávez, you said that sound, el super?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Kathleen Dale.
Good evening, everyone. Kathleen Dale, lifelong Moreno Valley resident. I wanted to just address you quickly on two matters. One is a project that'll be coming up to you, we believe, on September fifth. It's called the Moreno Valley Logistics Center. It's a one big building and three small buildings down in the Moreno Valley industrial area at Indian and Cremaria. And that area is designated for the uses that are proposed, but the large building, which is 1.3 million square feet, is proposed at an edge where the plan calls for a 300-foot buffer from the residences that are across the street. And as part of this project, they're asking to reduce that buffer to 100 feet. And the primary reason for asking for that change is because, I forget how long it was ago, four or five years ago, in fact, maybe longer than that, the Procter &amp; Gamble building site was approved for a reduction in the setback. But the circumstances for those two buildings and the two sites, their adjacencies, and the special accommodations that were put on the site in terms of where trucks can access, the Procter &amp; Gamble site, all the trucks come off of the west side of the building, so there's no trucks near the homes at all. And all the trucks circulate on the site within, I don't know how tall the walls are, they're taller than normal perimeter walls. So, all of their truck activity is very confined and removed from the homes, and that's not what's proposed for this new building. So, I would ask that when that project comes forward to you, that you please understand what's being proposed and seriously consider respecting the current general plan, our specific plan that protects those adjacent residents. Also, as part of that project, seventy percent of the trucks for this site are projected to turn right up Heacock, past Iris, up to Cactus. And so, that's another more than 500 big trucks. That's all the four-plus axle trucks that are going to go past those tracks that already get who knows how many, several hundred, if not more, trucks a day. And really, those tracks there are almost as significantly impacted as the homes nearby. And I would hope that the city will, at some point, do something about truck movements in that south area and get all the trucks moving south down to Harley Knocks. The second item is regarding the June's special election, and I just wanted to state again that you guys did not dot the i's and cross the t's and do a proper certification of that election result before you swore Mr. Cabrera in, and he is not properly seated. He shouldn't be participating in tonight's meeting. So, I hope that you'll go back and correct that and do it properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Next three speakers, please. Madam Clerk?
Luis Palomares and Tom Gerald.
And the third?
That's all.
Okay. Okay, Luis. Oh, she's on her way. Good evening, Luis. Good evening, Luis.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Wow. This lady never stops, she doesn't cease to amaze me. You're not properly seated. Who is she, the voter register? I just don't get it. She knows everything. She's an obstructionist of Moreno Valley, everything that wants to go up, she wants to tear down. She's been pretty successful in some things, believe me. So for her to come up here and assault a council member, wow. I don't wanna do it again, but I guess I gotta pick up all, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's, Kathleen Dale. Okay, I just wanna talk about some things that have been going on in our news. You know, we got the fake president up there. He's an obstructionist, number one. He sets a tone for racism, bigotry, and everything else. You know, he's bringing all these hate groups out of the closet. Well, they've always been there, but now, I mean, he gave them so mammo, and he can't even, he can't even denounce them. This is the man that's leading our country, a madman. He's gonna put us into World War III with Korea, and now he's throwing rocks over there at Venezuela. What's wrong with this man? But he will not say anything to his idol Putin over there. Because you know why? They got the same mindset, they got the same values, the same principles, the same morals. And you know, these people are saying, "Go back to your country." What country? This wasn't not our country. You know, Dale, why don't you shut your mouth?
Okay, Luis?
Well, this lady, I mean, or whoever's talking. Anyway, you know, I lost my train of thinking, that's what she's famous for doing here. You know, they say, "Go back to your country." This is our country, this is occupied Mexico. This was the Native Americans. Everybody came from all over, all over. They came to Alice Island, they came from every nation, every country to be here. But some people are still living back in the 1800s, Civil War, 1700 days. Come on. This is awful. You know, the obstructionists on the east side, they got the same mindset as that Donald Trump, if you ask me, a lot of them. They never want nothing to come here. Well, I said, well, they're shopping over there at Walmart on the east end now. They're buying their Starbucks coffee, they're doing all the above, getting their nails done, doing everything. Buying their fast-through food, whatever they do. They're buying their cars over there, but they don't want that either. They don't want anything here. Like I said, wow. They wanna keep us in the desert another 40 years? Well, we know Riverside has their dirty hands here, in here, and they've been doing it. And finally, we got a chance to get into the 20th century, 21st century, and we still can't do it because we've got the obstructionists here. Like I said, go retire, go to Sun City. We bought these houses, four or five big-bedroom homes, 3,000-square-foot homes. What, are we gonna live in them by ourselves with no kids, no grandchildren or nothing? Just because they're all retired and miserable? Go somewhere else and live then. We wanna get into the 21st century, like I said. Wow. What's it gonna take? I'm telling her, she knows everything, Kathleen Dale, misery.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period? Oh, it's Tom Gerald, sorry, Tom. Sorry about that, Tom.
No problem, Mayor. Everybody's a little bit rusty from your time off.
It's already been kinda like two months, I think.
Tom Gerald, speaking on behalf of myself and someone from the Sundance Center, I spent a little time. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, members of staff and the public, of course, welcome back and I hope your time between council meetings was productive, enjoy us. Great Fourth of July parade, so it's really one of the things that he does. You know, I have not only been a resident of Moreno Valley since 1981, but I've been a student of Moreno Valley, more specifically, the political actions or planning or development. That's the industry I come from. I've been on the record for decades now as a pro-growth, pro-development person. And part of the reason that is, is not only does it provide the homes that people live in and so on and so forth, but many, many, many amenities that can come with it. Create employment, tax base, places to shop, places to play, places to worship. So, good roads to drive on. So, I, in short, when properly done, growth, the benefits of growth will outweigh the problems. It doesn't mean we shouldn't respect the environment, doesn't mean we should approve everything that comes along. But on the overall, I had the privilege of living in planned communities before I came here, and I saw those benefits. In Mission VAO, where I lived before I came here, the traffic actually got better when the population tripled. And why was that? They built bigger roads, okay? Now, freeway is a disaster, the state did it to their job, but locally, the things moved very well. And so I wanted to speak on, what I'm gonna do, I can't do it three minutes, but I'm going to do my best to try and provide my insight to the council and the staff on what those benefits can be over time. Because I will speak very candidly that a goodly majority of the problems, the city, socioeconomic problems that we deal with, our tax base, are related to the, to an anti-growth sentiment. And it's a trickle-down theory in reverse, okay? And it strangles things, it sends out communications that are very negative. A few speakers ago, a gentleman was asking for better parks, better amenities for the kids. And, you know, those things come, they can come with your projects and stuff. So, you know, those are the things I like to see attached to good, properly planned development. And I hope to continue this dialogue. So I thank you, welcome back, and have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have any council members that would like to make their closing comments at this time? Seeing that there's none, we're gonna move to the consent calendar. We are now going to move to our joint consent calendar sections A through D on the agenda. All items listed under the consent calendar sections A, B, C, and D are considered routine and non-controversial, may be enacted by one motion unless a member of the city council would like to pull it. The motion to adopt the consent calendars is deemed to be a separate motion by each agency and shall be so recorded by the city clerk. Items withdrawn for report or discussion will be heard after public hearing items. Staff has requested that item 825 be continued to the September 5th, 2017 meeting. And if I recall, item 825 is the... Yeah, the Oak Park Apartments. So they're requesting to move it to the September 5th council meeting. Okay? And then, whoops. Oh, actually, how come it says here September 5th, but then on theirs, it says October? Okay, do you, do you wanna move it to October or September? Who's from staff?
September 5th was the request of the applicant, thank you.
Okay, September 5th, okay. Okay, so yours, I guess, I don't know. Yeah, because for hers, it says October. Okay, alright. And then, if you like any council items removed for separate action, please push your speaker request. Yes. So, Councilmember Gaiba, which item would you like removed for separate action?
Well, I'm working off my original draft. It seemed, the numbers seemed to be a little off from the final one we just got up here at the table. Because on mine, 824 is the Oak Park Apartments. So no, I have them both, but, so correct me, so I'll read the titles of it with the ones that I do. That way, I'm in the right place.
Okay, so, yeah, just...
Yeah, that's fine. So, A5, lift of personnel changes, just for a report. A6, selection of voting delegates for a separate vote. You got a lot of them here on the consent calendar, so just give me a couple of seconds to peruse through it here with my marks. A15 for a separate vote. And a report, obviously. A17, approval of proposed solution for a summary vacation of the Old Ritchie Vista, just a report.
You said A17?
That's what mine's showing. With the one I had, the one we just got up here. It's now A18. So, I don't know what got added or subtracted or changed in there from the draft that I had. So, I'm sorry, I just, I don't...
So it's A18?
Yeah. So I was working off the draft that was given to me. A22 for a discussion item only. You've already pulled A24 for a later date. That's okay, it was just gonna be a discussion. Separate vote on A25. That would be the authorization to conduct a full road closure.
What item's that?
I'm showing A25, but I'll read it to you. It's 2723 authorization to conduct a full road closure of Fur Avenue. A22 is the...
You said A22?
Approve easement deed from the city of Moreno Valley to Eastern Municipal Water District.
That's A20.
Very different from what I got here.
A20?
So by the time I got here, I didn't have an opportunity to cross-reference what you gave me.
So Councilmember Gaiba, A20, what's the A20 again?
Well, I guess he's, mine says A22. Well, no, I have, but to cross-reference it would take too much time. That's the problem when we got these. I'm working off the draft they gave me just the other day. Yeah, the easement. It says Eastern Municipal Water District, yeah. Stations, just for...
Which item was that again? A23, so not A22.
Out A20.
So I have A5, A18, and A23.
The Pigeon Pass Road, Eastern Municipal Water District easement. Then I have the, you already pulled the one for Oak Park Apartments. And then authorization to conduct a full road closure. Mine's A25, but whatever that one is, for separate vote, right?
So A26 is a separate vote?
Yeah, I guess that's if the number's right. And I really apologize, but I'm working off of what the most recent one that Pat gave me to work off of. So, it's not coinciding with your numbers now. Approval of amendment number one to agreement to form the Lake Elsinore and Canyon Lake total maximum daily load, just for a discussion item.
What item is that?
And that's the last one I have on mine.
A27?
So it must be A27 for you guys. Again, my apologies, but I, to correlate...
Okay, so I have four items, A6, A15, A25, and A26 for a separate action.
A separate vote, yeah.
And then, A5, A18, A23, and A27 for discussion.
Is that correct, Martin?
And just to remind everybody that this is a consent calendar. So there are items that are routine, non-controversial. So not all, you know, the time, you know, you know, I'm tasked with running an orderly meeting here. And I wanna make sure that we're able to get the meeting going. So, you know, we'll allow this for this time, but the next time, I am gonna ask the council to weigh in. Okay? We'll go ahead and start with A5 discussion.
Mayor, could you repeat that? Remember, I told you my left ear is not working right, so...
Yeah. Yeah, that this time, I'm gonna ask, well, actually, this time, we're gonna go ahead and do the discussion, but I am gonna ask the council to weigh in on, you know, whether we wanna hear all of these items at the next meetings. Because this is a consent calendar. It's routine and non-controversial. And if you have questions, if you have questions, you can ask the staff. That's what we all do.
Well, actually, the regulations say that...
Yes. But it is my right to run an efficient meeting, okay? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and go with A5? Yes. Okay, which ones? A9 and A11. Okay, so we'll start with A5. And that is... Okay, list of personnel changes. And that is report of...
I'll give that report, do you have a specific question, council member?
I just, I just wanted to make a comment on that one. That several years ago, we laid off a lot of people. And if we look at that item, I don't know if you can put it up there from the thing, we're beginning to hire back and retain and promote a lot of people now. And I just wanted to compliment the staff and how we're doing to bring more personnel onboard and to promote those people that deserve to be promoted. It was just a complimentary thing, and I wanted to bring it forward. The reason that I do these things is because many times, the public doesn't get a chance to hear these comments. And many times, the public's asking me, "I wanna hear about that consent item." And when it's on a consent item, they don't get a chance to hear it, or even discuss it or see it. So by pulling it during the meeting, we give our residents that opportunity to hear those things. I know I can ask you, but I'm concerned about my residents...
Thank you. Okay, no? Okay. Alright, the next one is A18. And that is, I have here approval of proposed resolution for a summary, oh, the Old Ritchie Vista Drive, Heacock Street. That's report of public works. Lloyd?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members. Item A18 is a request to approve a resolution to summarily vacate Old Ritchie Vista Drive Road. This is in, a result of the realignment of the roadway and is consistent with the original dedication of the right-of-way. Staff feels it's appropriate, now that the project is complete, that we would summarily vacate the abandoned roadway.
I understand that. I had some residents ask me, so just real quick, what do they mean by vacate it? So Mike, you and I know what it means, but some of the folks out there, it's always academic for them.
So, the right-of-way was dedicated for use of a roadway. Now that the roadway has been abandoned, the city has no further use for that right-of-way. And therefore, the easement is vacated, and the property would no longer be utilized by the city.
And it's taken off the maps, am I correct?
That is my understanding correct.
Thank you. I just wanted people to understand that.
Okay, A23, that's... The easement deed from the city of Moreno Valley to the Eastern Municipal Water District. Is there a specific question or comment on this one?
Yes. Mike, would you just kinda fill us in on how long it took? I've been watching him do that and the progress that it took, and why we're dedicating that easement over from Eastern Municipal from the project that took place, it's come an update, which we wouldn't hear if it was just voted on immediately.
I am happy to report, thank you. The roadway was reopened in time for school to start. As part of the reconstruction, there was a water line owned and maintained by EMWD that had to be relocated. This easement is to provide the area for the water line to be located. There was an easement initially approved by council a couple of years ago. As part of the redesign and construction, they needed a sliver more, so this easement fulfills that.
And that's for the new housing tract, am I correct?
Correct, on the northeast corner of Pigeon Pass and Old Lake.
I got questions about that, thank you.
Thank you.
A27? Agreement to form the Lake Elsinore and Canyon Lake. That's, Michael?
Yes. Did you wanna report on this, or did you have a specific question before I jumped in?
Just update us on what that was all about, because that was formulated before this council or even my previous council was put together. So, but I'm familiar with it. But I had some residents asking, "What's this all about?"
Sure.
Pull it for you.
A task force, as you mentioned, a task force was formed several years ago. This amendment to the agreement keeps the task force in place. The task force serves the purpose of pooling several agencies together and resources so we get a cost savings, so that we're in compliance with our NPDS obligations.
What's NPDS mean, Mike?
National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System.
Thank you very much.
Tongue twister.
Okay, and then we have A9 for discussion, which is the council discretionary. Councilor Marquez, did you have questions or comments on that one?
Yeah, just a question.
Just a question. Yeah, let me get back to it here real quick. City clerk, maybe Michelle, city manager, could, what is that fund for? So residents could understand that. What is that fund for?
Which one, I'm sorry?
A9.
A9.
The discretionary, expenditure reports.
In each, in the adopted budget, each council member has a certain amount of what we call discretionary funds. They can use, you can use that for, if you go to a chamber dinner or other community functions, that's what we pay for those functions and events out of the discretionary accounts. And to increase transparency, a couple of years ago, we started putting these reports on the council agendas for everyone to see where the funds go.
Also, at our discretion, we can use this for donations to nonprofit groups, for any functions that they, they show the money.
Yes.
We can also use that for that, too.
Yes.
And is it just for all nonprofit, or is there any type of other groups that we can use that money for? Marshall, or Martin?
Thank you.
Yes.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, there is a policy that governs the discretionary funds. There's obviously prohibitions from charitable donations of public funds. But any programs that benefit the community as a whole, for example, children reading programs, any events that bring basically a benefit to a community, those funds can be used to assist if requests are made from individual council members in those types of events.
That's it, thank you.
Okay, and then you also asked for A eleven, Councilor Marquez, which is, oh, the payment register.
Payment register. There's one on there for the May Robinson Ready Mix. I noticed that there's a reimbursement for the amount of three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Marshall, can you talk on that?
Yes, with that amount, previously, the Robertson's Ready Mix concrete facility was located on Day. When we had the redevelopment agency in place, that redevelopment agency worked with Robertson's to relocate that site. That new site is now in the middle of being graded for the quarter project. So by having that negotiated agreement with Robertson's to move their plant, we now have a new site for a couple hotels, gas stations, restaurants there. But part of that agreement was, as they also brought sales tax to the city, through the redevelopment agency, we would contribute back some of that sales tax to them. So these payments are a reimbursement of those sales tax through the redevelopment ROPS, or the Recognized Obligation Payment Schedule that's approved by the council successor agency. It's that reimbursement back to Robertson's Ready Mix.
And how much longer do we have for that commitment?
It's-
Ballpark.
Ballpark around ten years, but it's a diminishing amount. Earlier, it was a higher percentage, and then that percentage will decrease over time.
Okay, that's good. One more, Think Together. Now, I know that's a nonprofit group, and looking at the amount, four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. People ask me, well, why is only one nonprofit group getting that much money? And some of these smaller groups don't even get a dollar from us. I tried to explain it to them, the way it was explained to me was, they fall within the guidelines. And this is grant money. This is not money from the city. This is all grant funding. There is a, how would you say, guidelines that they have to follow. And unfortunately, Think Together falls under those guidelines. No one else who's applied has fallen under those guidelines. Am I correct on that, Marshall? Or close?
Mayor may want to add on as well, but with the Think Together program, it is grants that we receive. This is also in conjunction with the school districts, because some of these after-school programs are taking place on the school sites. So we do have that one specific provider that comes in and provide all of the services. I'm not aware directly on other providers, but it is something that has to be in conjunction with all of the agencies, really.
Basically, we use them as our, to do our after-school.
After-school programs.
To do all the after-school programs.
And the city gets part of that money, isn't it, administrative fees?
We do. It's, the grant total is approximately five million dollars per year. The city council, a few years ago, we actually used to provide those services with in-house staff. So we had a significantly higher number of staff members that would provide those services through the city. A few years ago, the city council decided to contract those services out to Think Together. Think Together is a national nonprofit. They have access to other funding such as grants that we do not have as a city. It's been a very great, it's been a great partnership. And yes, we do keep a small administrative fee since we do administer the contract with the state. I think it's about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year out of that big grant amount.
Okay, that's it, Mayor.
Great, so just to recap, we do have items A six, A fifteen, actually, A six, which is the, sorry, selection of voting delegates, A fifteen, which is the contracts with ACELA. And then A twenty-six, which is the full road closure from Fur Avenue, Nason Street. These items will move to section F. Okay, just want to recap that, so the city clerk, you got that? We're going to go ahead and take public comments on consent items other than the separate actions. So if you have comments on any of those particular ones, A six, A fifteen, A twenty-six, I will ask you to have those comments in section F. Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments for the consent items other than the items, the separate action items?
Only one, Kathleen Dale.
Okay.
Again, Kathleen Dale, I just have a few quick comments, and I think I sent emails today, actually, out of my normal mode of just showing up here to speak. On A four, the minutes for June twentieth, the points that are listed there characterizing my comments are not remotely close to what I spoke about, and I sent suggested language for what that should say. And I hope that those changes would be reflected. On the Trails Board, thank you so much for finally coming around and appointing Mr. Brooks and Ms. Bright Cruz. Well, I guess you're about to. And I hope that the lesson that was learned from the, what happened along the way to this point has sunk in, and there'll be due consideration for longstanding board and commission volunteers in the community and the service that they bring, the value they bring to the community. On the council appointments, I just want to say, you know, I see you're continuing to put Councilmember Gaiaba on the naughty seat. And while it might be a personal vendetta, it's really not very mature. And it does disenfranchise his constituents, because they don't have representation on those cities' boards and commissions, or at least in the council support for those boards and commissions. On the payment register, it's the A ten item. There's an item for a four hundred and ninety-one dollar refund to Highland Fairview for the, looks like it was the balance on a planning deposit case. And it's just a small amount, but given the latest information that was shared to the public on their arrears for the legal costs for the World Logistics Center, it would have been nice for that money to have been retained and put against that to make the citizens a little more whole. On the library contract, A sixteen, it would be nice to see the city move towards bringing those people back as city employees again at some point in the future. And I think that was it for the consent calendar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Kathleen. We're going to go ahead and go to this part. Motion to approve the consent calendar except items A six, A fifteen, and A twenty-six. Okay, motion by Council, Councilmember Gaiaba, and a second by Mayor Potembaka. Please vote when it appears. Oh, okay, she's working on it. Okay, please vote. Okay, and it passes five-zero. We're going to go to public hearings. We have questions or comments from the public on a hearing. Public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per individual and must pertain to the subject under consideration. You know, I don't really think we have many speakers here for that item, but we'll go with E one, which is the public hearing to open the thirty-day public comment period for the assessment of fair housing. And if there's public speakers, it'll be three minutes. So we'll go ahead and do a staff report by the Financial and Management Services Department. Marshall?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, city councilmembers. Per HUD's regulations, every five years, the city must submit an assessment of fair housing in an effort to promote fair housing choice, foster an inclusive and integrated community, and remove barriers to opportunity. As part of its assessment, the city will study data and issues that affect fair housing in Marina Valley and identify related goals and priorities. This assessment is required by HUD in order for Marina Valley to continue to receive their CDBG funds and other federal grants. And this public hearing is required to approve the beginning of the thirty-day process. From this point forward, we'll have surveys available for the public. We'll seek input from fair housing and other mechanisms, and then come back with some further information for the city council on September nineteenth. With that, that concludes my report.
All right, any council questions of staff, seeing there's no buttons that have been pushed? I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. Any public testimony, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay, the hearing is closed. Entertained a motion by council to approve staff recommendations number one and two.
Second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Gaiaba, and second by Mayor Potembaka. Please vote. It passes five-oh. We now move on to E two, which is the public hearing for two National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, Elimination System mail ballot proceedings, report of the Public Works Department. Michael Lloyd?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, councilmembers. Candace Castle, our special districts division manager, shall present E two.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem, members of the city council, Candace Castle, special districts division manager. This item is a public hearing to add two parcels into the city's NPDS funding program. The National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is a federally mandated program to control pollution of stormwater runoff. Supreme West Property Incorporated is approved to construct a prefabricated warehouse at the southwest corner of Alessandra and Grant. And Marina Valley Sleep One LLC is approved to construct a new retail store on the east side of campus, east of Day Street. As a condition of, that must be north of Day Street, my apologies. As a condition of approval of the projects, no, east of Day, north of campus. As a condition of approval of the projects, the property owners are required to provide a funding source for the city's NPDS program. The revenue will be used to offset increased costs the city will incur as a result of the projects. The property owners have requested a parcel charge be applied to their annual property tax bill to collect the funding. Before the city can levy the charge onto the property tax bill, the property owner must first approve it through individual mail ballot proceedings. Each property owner has returned their ballot to the city clerk. After the city conducts a public hearing, the ballots can be opened and counted. Each property owner's ballot will be counted individually to determine whether or not they have approved inclusion of their respective properties into the program. If the property owner approves the ballot, the parcel charge will be applied to the property tax bill of only the parcels identified on the ballot and will not impact any other property in the city. Staff respectfully requests the city council conduct a public hearing and upon its close, direct the city clerk to open each ballot and announce the results for each.
Thank you, Candace, and before we do that, we're looking, we're finding the ballots, or?
Yes, they're bringing them down.
Okay, all right, so any council questions? Okay, any public comments before this?
None.
No, okay. Are the ballots far away?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, up to you, but if you should decide, you can basically move on to E two, receive the second staff report, and then when the ballots arrive, you can take them-
Okay.
One at a time.
Okay.
Go ahead, you can move forward to the other item.
Okay, but I think, okay, so we'll do the staff report for the next item? Which, it's still E two, right, or, no, you're, I mean, actually, she's done. Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll go, we'll go back to, yeah, all right. So A six was selection of voting delegates, and, okay? So, city clerk, are you still? Oh, okay, well, I'll just make this report. Basically, so I selected the voting delegates for the California League of Cities on the twenty-seventeenth. There's one that's the actual delegate and then one that's the alternate. And so at the end of the three-day conference, I believe it's three days or four days, on the third day or the last day, the delegate will vote on behalf of the city, you know, as far as, you know, representing the city. Yes, Martin, do you have anything else to add?
There'll be two resolutions that were before the assembly. And either the delegate or the alternate would cast a vote on those resolutions on behalf of the city.
So if the regular one doesn't, isn't there, then the alternate can cast a vote. And I nominated Mayor Potembaka and then Councilmember Cabrera. Okay, any, any questions?
This is a regular one, so this question or this discussion, how do you ever want to put it?
Right now, we're just under questions.
Okay, but then we'll have some discussion on that, too. Was there also a second alternate position available for that as well?
Yes, sir.
And there was no selection for a second alternate in the event that the delegate and the first alternate were not there?
Yes, sir, I was only given two names.
Okay, so there is now, where there was an option for two alternates, there's now only one alternate on that, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any public comments?
None.
Okay, any council deliberation?
Oh, I think Kathleen had one, but I don't know if it was for this item. Really quick, Kathleen Dale again, and I did send you each an email earlier today. Just wanted to reiterate that, you know, Mr. Cabrera has not been properly seated, so he's not really eligible to serve that role, and Mr. Gaiaba is much more qualified. So please appoint Mr. Gaiaba as the alternate.
Any other public comments?
None.
Now, we're going to move on to deliberation. We'll just do one round. Councilmember Gaiaba?
Thank you. You commented that the reason that you assign these delegates to League of California Cities as a voting delegate is because of their qualifications. So I just want to remind the community, and I'm hoping that my own colleagues continue to listen, that not only have I been the voting delegate for going on, for the past two and a half years, but I've almost never missed any of the regular regional meetings where I also have voted for the city. Additionally, I've sat on the Transportation Subcommittee for the League of California Cities and also the Revenue and Taxation Committee for two years for the League of California Cities, and have also been the voting delegate and never missed one on behalf of the city. Additionally, for the League of California Cities, I also sit on the, committee for going over all of the Senate bills and Assembly bills. So I'm really very well-versed in representing our city and our region's concerns. Additionally, I sit on the same and appointed the same committee for SCAG where I represent our city and our region. So I think my credentials speak for themselves. Your decision to select whoever you wish is entirely up to you, but my comments are very simple. If you are telling the public that you're selecting somebody for the benefit of the city because they're qualified, I'm much more qualified than any of the two selections you put out there. And I just want the community to understand that I've worked hard for them, and to remove me from this position means you move, remove a very qualified individual who's been representing this city for two and a half years. And so I ask that you do not remove me from my position that I currently hold as a voting delegate for all these years. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor Potembaka?
I had a question for you, Mayor. Did Mr. Gaiaba ask you to appoint him to the League of California Cities as a delegate?
Never.
So this position, it doesn't belong to one person, it belongs to the community. And I respect the appointment, and I am humbled by the mayor asking me to represent the city on this delegation. And just like Mr. Gaiaba, myself, and every, anybody here, we don't gain experience unless we're appointed. So if we don't appoint Mr. Cabrera or anyone else, they'll never have the experience. So just like Mr. Gaiaba, he was appointed at the first time, and he gained this experience. Now it's time for us to appoint somebody else. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Marquez? Oh, wait, wait, one second, one second. There.
I've been recently elected, but not to... Not new to the system. I've been up Sacramento with Councilman Geiba. You would have to sit down and listen when he sits in these meetings. Regardless if you're new, that you gotta learn. Moreno Valley is at a stage right now. We don't have time to throw newbies in there to learn. Sacramento is... I don't know what's going on in Sacramento, but we need representatives from Moreno Valley to go up there and represent Moreno Valley. Jeff Geiba, Councilman Member Jeff Geiba is the only one on this council right now, in my opinion, that should stay on that to represent the city of Moreno Valley. I have nothing against Councilman Cabrera. I know he's gotta learn at one time or another. But believe me, people in Sacramento don't know what's going on. And with people like Councilman Geiba, believe me, he can help our city up there. So to change it at this time, I don't agree with, but then again, I'm just one vote up here. Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
I would just like to speak regarding Mayor Protembaka. You know, she's been in the position for a long time as well. She's been to Sacramento many, many times as well. Not only some of the council members up here. So I respect the mayor's decision to appoint her as the primary for that position. And I'm honored to be an alternate for that position as well. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and call for the vote, so make a... Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protembaka?
Second.
A second by Councilmember Cabrera. Please vote. And it's... Motion passes 3-2. And then we're gonna move on to A26, which... Let me see which one that was.
A15, Mayor.
Oh, A15? Yeah, he's... Did you say that that was incorrect? That's what I heard from Pat. Okay, so it's A26. One second. That is authorization to conduct a full road closure on Fur Avenue from Nason Street to 600 feet west of Nason Street for the reconstruction of Fur Avenue from August 31st to September 30th, 2017. Report of Public Works?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protembaka, council members. A26, as the mayor just mentioned, is a request for a full road closure of Fur Avenue, located just west of Nason Street. The request is due to RSI Communities conducting their single-family residential community located on the southwest corner there at Nason and Fur. As part of their requirements for their project, they need to reconstruct Fur Avenue. Part of that reconstruction is changing the grade of the roadway. The roadway will be raised approximately 10 feet, and there's also some storm drain improvements that are needed. In order to accommodate these improvements, the... It's best that we close the roadway. The closure is requested from August 31st of this year until September 30th of this year. That concludes my report.
And if you have any council questions again? Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, yesterday I received this notice of general... To the general public. It states here that the contractor, RSI Communities, wants to close this roadway. My question is this. This project's been here for how many years? Many years. Now, when Old Lake Road was... When they... The developer asked us to close that road, they agreed to do it during the summertime when school was out. No inconvenience to anybody. Well, this project here's been here a while. Why didn't the developer think about that during the summertime? Now, this is gonna be an inconvenient and a traffic nightmare for that area. You got Valley View High School, you got Bear Valley and Mountain Schools in that area. This main artery is traveled by many, many people per day. And not only for the schools, for the shopping center and for the surrounding area. Off-ramps, on-ramps to the 60 freeway. Are we going to bend to a developer and say, "You can do whatever you want to at any time"? Or do we say, "You should've done this during the summertime, so we want inconvenience"?
What's your question, Councilmember?
My question is, we have to approve of this tonight. Why can't we go back to the developer and says, "Why don't you put this on the back burner and do it during a time where there's no school? Where there's... It's not heavily traveled"? Can we go back and tell the developer, "Change this"?
Lloyd?
We did work with RSI Communities and we encouraged them to try to get things done during the summer so we wouldn't have an impact during school in session. As part of the program to... For the street improvements, there are storm drain improvements and that required some revisions to the plans that are approved by Flood Control District, which delayed getting this to you until now. And in terms of delaying this until next year, that obviously impacts their construction schedule and their ability to deliver new homes.
This contractor or this developer, I I just honestly believe, strongly believe, that he knew this was gonna get approved, no matter when he did it. This developer contribute to million... Hundreds and thousands of dollars to these campaigns for City Council. So you're telling the developer, you know, "You can do whatever you want to". And basically, that's what they're doing. That's my belief. So the council members, I mean, the citizens suffer for it.
And is that's RSI?
RSI Communities.
Yeah, I don't think they've ever received a contribution from RSI.
So at this point, you know, I don't agree closing the road. And if we do close it, let them work 24/7 to get that road done. They're so anxious to get that done. Thank you.
Councilmember Geiba?
Thank you. Now, I was just curious myself. What's the name of the housing development, Mike?
I apologize, I don't remember the...
RSI.
The developers are...
The actual housing.
But I don't know the...
What's the title of it? I think you can see it from the freeway on the wall or something. Does anybody remember? What is this? Pacific Communities?
That's a separate builder.
Yeah, I realize that. Do we know who the actual developer who... The name of the developer himself?
Developer is RSI Communities.
Okay, do we know the name? I'm just following up on what David, Mr. Councilman Marquez said. Do we actually know the name of the developer, any of the developers themselves?
I'm sorry.
Have we been dealing with them? I'm just curious.
The person that I've been dealing with is their project manager and his name is Darius Fataka. I do not know their CEO.
Could this have been delayed to like a Christmas break? Because they go like three weeks now, I think, in Moreno Valley.
We did talk about delaying it until Christmas and the concern there was because there's a drainage channel through the area, we were concerned that we would potentially not get the work done in the closure time. And therefore, we would still be impacting schools because it would be during the rainy season. Obviously, we're subject to weather at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
All right, any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Leo Gonzalez and Luis Palomares.
I didn't even see you, Leo. How you doing?
I'll make this short and quick. I'm kinda glad I came today because I live on Fur, almost on the corner where the... I see the construction going on. So as a member of the community, I do agree with what Mr. Marquez says. There's a lot of schools there. There's already a lot of traffic as it is. But there's a lot of arteries through there. You have Morrison, you have LaSalle, you have Eucalyptus. You have a lot of ways to get around, which is... It'll be a nightmare. But as somebody who actually lives there and actually walks that way to Target quite often, that area is in much-needed improvement. And I think that one month of closure, I'll deal with the traffic. You know, and I think I would speak for the residents in that area. They'll deal with the traffic because I got kids and when we go there, we walk that little area. Sounds bad, but there's paraphernalia. There's people right there by the storm drain that they were talking about that sit there and do drugs. So I would love to see that area improved. I don't care if it takes two months. I would deal with a little bit of traffic and watch the city improve and move it forward. And that's the traffic and all that's just a minor inconvenience, in my opinion. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Luis Palomares.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, I'm amazed, Marcus, David Marcus, that you really care about the kids. Wow. When you had that music program dismantled at Armada, you and your tribe of people, you know, the East... Some of the East Enders. When you had that dismantled, where did all these kids go to the mu... They don't have that music program no more. You care about kids. What a joke. Help me help you. What is it? Help me help myself? I mean, come on, give me a break. It's so... It's so hypocrisy, so much hypocrisy. When they closed that street down on Paris and they did all the construction there, wow, I love it now. But you know, it was... It was going on for a couple of months and it was an inconvenience. And I live right there in Paris in Manzanita. My grandkids go to that school right there on Paris, North Ridge. My daughter-in-law had to go around blocks and everything else, but they made it happen. My two daughter-in-laws, in fact. We made it happen for a better reason, you know? So you're really worried and concerned. You're just a joke. You know, that school program. Where are these kids now? I don't even know how the school district let you put up a film there. I mean, they let you use their overhead and everything. That's a joke, you know? And then you're talking about, "Oh, wow, you know, how the inconvenience... Inconvenience, my foot. We need that fixed." I've been there through several times. I go there all the time. I got three children that live on the East End. And I'm gonna be inconvenienced, but so what? Like the last speaker said, paraphernalia, all of this stuff going down there? That street needs fixing from a long, long time ago. And who's doing the speaking for you? Kathleen Dale? You know, it seems like you get all your info and your information because you don't know how to speak for any... For nothing. You get all tongue-tied and everything else.
Right back there, please.
So I don't... I don't get your reasoning, "Oh, wow, inconvenience, the artery and all that". You didn't care about the inconvenience for the kids then or the parents? You know, driving their kids somewhere else to get into a music program. Thanks a lot for nothing.
Yeah, during closing comments. During closing comments, we'll let you, for sure. Okay, is there any other speaker? Madam Clerk?
None.
No? Okay. All right, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment there. And, you know, I just want to say, I really believe this is a non-issue, to be honest. You know, if you read the staff report, it doesn't adversely impact the egress or ingress of any of the neighboring properties. It's really a non-issue. And to be honest, RSI Communities is going to install lights, catch basins, storm drain, asphalt concrete sidewalk, striping, new street. It's actually beneficial to the community. But I do think that some are making it a little bit political, thinking that some of the members of the council received contributions. But it's not from that company. Entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations?
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protembaka, second by Cabrera? Okay, please vote. It's approved three and one no, and then one abstention. All right, so we're moving on to... We're gonna go back to E2 to see if they got the ballots? All right. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations number one, two, and three to count the ballots and to let us know. Motion by Baca and a second by Geiba? Okay, please vote on that. We were about to start counting. Abby, did you?
I didn't do it because I was opening.
All right, so it's approved four and then one no?
Four.
This is just for her to count.
I just opened it.
Oh, no. It shouldn't say that. So Pat, this is just to direct you to count the ballots.
So it's yes with the weighted ballot count of one. And the other one is a yes with the weighted ballot count as one.
Okay, so I entertain a motion by council to approve four and five, which is numbers four and five. Okay, motion by Mayor Protembaka, second by Councilmember Cabrera. And it's approved 5-0. And then again, item E3 again was pulled. And then, so that moves us on to now business. Yes. Yeah. So we're gonna go ahead and go to business. It was... Unless there's a majority objection, I'm gonna move G5 as the first item, Moreno Valley College Promise Initiative. And I'll go ahead and make that report. Clerk, unless you have something else?
No, sir.
So basically, Moreno Valley College has something called the Promise Initiative, which is really a great program. Many colleges, community colleges are actually doing this, where they're actually providing free tuition to students that go to school full-time and follow a structured program. And so this includes a summer learning bridge program and other things that they have to do as well, like for example, counseling and academic counseling, that they have to receive a student education plan and those kinds of things. They have to be full-time, which is basically 12 units. It's really a great program that they're doing and they're providing the free tuition, books, fees, and parking after the students have already sought every financial aid opportunity. So what this proposal that I bring forward is a partnership agreement. It's a partnership agreement in that we're partnering with Moreno Valley College and becoming a partner with them. And we're helping to sponsor Moreno Valley residents to be part of the Promise Initiative. So this would actually allow the college to tag, using their software system that they have, tag students that are from Moreno Valley that are in the Promise Initiative. And then using the $50,000 that the city would provide, they would take money from there to pay for their tuition, books, fees, and parking. So that's basically, in essence, what the Promise Initiative is. And then, in essence, what this partnership proposal. City Manager, did you want to add anything?
No, Mayor, I think you've got it covered. Thank you.
Okay. All right, so are there any council questions? We have Councilmember Geiba.
Thanks. Where's the money coming from our budget if approved? Marshall?
This is a new expenditure, so it'd be taken from the existing general fund fund balance.
So we never... So do... What's our fund balance at this point in time?
Including the allocations that we had for emergency and kind of the rainy day fund, it's $37.5 million.
Are you suggesting that this money would come out of our contingency monies that we've put aside, that $37 million?
Well, with the budget that was recently... Well, with, with the budget that was recently adopted by City Council, the seventeen eighteen budget had revenues in excess of expenditures. Off the top of my head, I believe it's about a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars. So we have those additional revenues that can be used for this. So that, rather than those monies at the end of the year going to fund balance, we're committing them to this project to invest into this aspect.
That's for this year or for the whole two-year budget program?
This is just identified as fiscal year seventeen eighteen.
So if we take the fifty out of that from the hundred and sixty, something, doesn't leave us a whole lot of something else comes up, am I correct?
Well, and, and as we look at the budget, uh we tend to examine it on a quarterly basis. So we'll come back with revenue projections and expenditures um on an ongoing basis to make sure as anything evolves or changes, we'll provide you the most updated information.
Michelle, maybe you can answer this one for me as I'm reading this. It says Marina Valley College plans to assist five hundred students. Now, are those five hundred from Moreno Valley? And will fifty thousand dollars, if you divide the numbers, it's, it's not a whole lot of money per student if they're gonna fund five hundred students. So I'm assuming five hundred students doesn't mean all Moreno Valley, am I correct?
I'm going to defer to the city attorney.
Thank you, Michelle. The program that's run by the college and campus is five hundred students. The um and it most likely includes students that do not live in Moreno Valley. The, the agreement, the partnership that the mayor is proposing and the proposed agreement would apply the money only to those students who live in Moreno Valley. Our understanding is that, that the money allocated uh would fully assist twenty-six, I believe, students.
Twenty-seven, but in reality more because what happens is not, not everyone will need the full amount. The, the tuition, you know, so because we've been, we've, they've identified them as a promise. And so they're able to get uh monies from their financial aid. So that's why it comes out to five hundred. But in reality, it's not that, that, that amount.
Um but they, do they do, they do have to meet these structural supports?
Yes.
So if they don't meet those structural supports, then we won't support them on that one.
Yes.
So there are some conditions attached to this, and if they don't meet those conditions, we don't pay, right?
Well, they're not, they become ineligible to receive any further money.
To receive any further monies on that. So um the, the only concern I would have is how much we're still leaving. On our quarterly basis, we can reassess that. If we have other programs that do come up, we want to be able to have financial support for those. Why is it fifty thousand? Why wasn't it thirty thousand or, you know, something like that? Is there some special agreement is for, it has to be that amount, or can we do it for a lesser amount?
I think the, the discussions that were held between Representative of the City and the school identified that as a, as a reasonable amount and, and meaningful amount for, for, uh for the city to be a partner in this, in this endeavor. Then I think the school is spending in excess of six, seven hundred thousand dollars, uh I think, on, on this program overall.
Well, it's the first time I've heard about it, so you know, I wasn't active in any kind of the discussions for that particular issue. So I was wondering why it has to be fifty thousand, and if that's what they've decided that they want to do. And that's not that much money, but nonetheless, okay, thank you. That's what all I wanted to know about.
Certainly.
Do we have uh, okay, any public comments on this item, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir. Luis Palomares.
Is she the only one?
Yes, sir.
Luis? Oh, there she is, okay.
Supposed to be the last speaker on this one. I put my speaker slip in last. Luis Palomares. Wow, this is great. Keep going. This is great. This is the kind of things I like, the positive stuff. I like to stay on a positive note, you know? It's really great what this college uh program's gonna do for, for the community here. It's fantastic. See, my heart's over there at the school district, but I came over here eight years ago to see if we could get something going, to get some jobs here, because not every kid wants to go to college either. But at least they can go get a good skill and a good trade and work in some of these jobs when they come. It's gonna take twenty years. Not gonna happen in five years. It's gonna be a long time. A lot of us will be dead. But at least our kids, we left them something. At least the community, we left them something. And this is great. You know, I'm going back that way and I, I don't think they want me over there, but I'm going because there's a lot of things that need to be fixed at the school district, just like here. But I think we're, you know, on our way now. Thank God, finally. Thank God, we've arrived. So this is fantastic. This is the kind of stuff I like to hear about. It's great. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go to uh council deliberation. We'll do one round. Councilmember, yeah, ah, oops. Okay. Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, when I heard about this, I thought it was, it was something that should have been done years ago, but um thanks to um Mayor Gutierrez, that uh I'm glad he brought it up. Again, I wish it would have been more money for us to distribute out there, but at least this is a start. This is a start. And um if we can work with the school district, I don't know what they're involved i- isn't here, but with the city fifty thousand, it's a great start. I, I approve this program. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Yes, I uh support this program a hundred percent. I know that uh the fifty thousand that we're providing for the college is, is just a drop in the bucket. There's a big need out in the community. And uh the Promise Initiative is going to skyrocket. It's gonna help a lot of families, a lot of students that, I mean, we can all say, yeah, let's go to college, but there's a lot of poverty out there and there's a lot of students that believe they cannot attend a college because they don't have the financial support. So um thank you to the community for, you know, taxpayers for providing the money for some students to have some money to go to college. Thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah, this is, this is a, a great uh opportunity for a lot of students, definitely, you know, as a, as a part of that community as well. I know how difficult it can be to pay for it. Uh I believe it's the first time that the college district is actually uh doing this, the first year promise. So they're just at Moreno Valley College. They're helping five hundred students. And we were talking about that a few minutes ago. Uh financial aid is coming in, so all these other resources are being uh implemented into this program. And then the college is adding in uh their own part to help pay for the full first year tuition. So uh we're partnering up with them as well, and we want to continue that because I've met a lot of students who, yes, they do get help from financial aid. Some of them get paid tuition completely. Some of them get partial help, and a lot of them get no help at all. So any help is a lot of help. And I'm glad to see all of this coming up, and we need to keep it going.
And I'll just um say um that San Francisco, uh also the city of New York, um they're doing programs, you know, like this. The college already has a program like this, and now what we're doing is uh helping them uh to uh provide more sponsorships uh for Moreno Valley residents. And I think that's a, really a good thing, because we have to invest in our, in our youth, our future. And we want them to, to come back to Moreno Valley. So I think that it's a token of appreciation that if we provide this, that this is a, you know, something that they will think, well, you know what, we want to come back to Moreno Valley. And um so I'm full support of it, and I'm gonna close uh the discussion, and I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve G five, item G five, staff recommendations one, two, and three.
Okay, motion by Mayor Pro Tembaca?
I'll second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Cabrera?
Councilmember Marquez, give a vote, please. Thank you.
And it's approved five oh. And move on to go back to G one. Approval of lease agreement with the tw- two-two-five-oh Town Circle Holdings for space for a library branch. Uh report to the city manager.
Good morning, Mayor, or good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. I'm Steve Argus, Strategic Initiatives Manager. Item G one tonight requests approval to lease space at the Moreno Valley Mall so that the city can open its first ever branch library. Staff is very excited to bring this item to you. Opening another library is part of the city council's strategic plan, because many residents ranked it as a high priority when council asked for citizen input. Thus, the council gave staff direction to open a branch library uh in December of twenty seventeen. While that's an aggressive date, we are on track barring any disruptions. City staff investigated options for meeting the policy objective that you gave us by identifying the Moreno Valley Mall as the best option to provide another library branch in a heavily populated portion of the city to ensure that it was accessible by public transportation and to meet the timeline for opening a library branch by utilizing an existing building. Through negotiations with mall management, the city has secured approximately five thousand square foot suite in the mall across from Sears, near an exterior entrance to the mall. That mall entrance is the transfer location for nine different bus routes with RTA. The lease with the mall operator is for three years and includes two, three-year opportunities to extend the lease. Funds have already been allocated for this lease uh when council approved this year's budget. That would conclude my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So questions? Any public comments?
Yes, sir. We have two.
There it is, okay. Councilmember Gaiba?
I, I just have one, and it was posed to me by residents to ask the question, so I'm going to. I, I, I know all, we've sat down together and discussed this, but did we ever um ask the residents if this was a location they would be uh amenable to? Or did the residents themselves, even those people that use the current library, were they kind of polled as to a, a location they thought would be comfortable or in, in, in best use for the residents? Did we do that at all? Because I know the staff did the investigating.
Yes, we did. Not in any formal way did we ask.
So we, we never actually surveyed any of the residents themselves to find out if this would be an appropriate location. This is not a negative question. It was a question posed to me to ask you.
You, you're correct. One thing I did want to mention that we did do was using the city's GIS system. Uh we took the database of the library users and we mapped all of the uh look, their residences um to see where they lived. And that was one of the things that we took into account when we selected the mall as a site for the first satellite branch library.
Thank you, Michelle.
The results of that mapping were very evenly distributed throughout the city. There, there was no particular place where we had heavier users than others.
Thank you. I think you answered that question well. Appreciate it.
Any, you said there was a public comment?
Yes, there's two. Kathleen Dale and Leonardo Gonzalez.
Okay.
And Kathleen Dale. Um actually, um Councilmember Gaiba asked the question that I had as well, which was, I didn't see anything in the staff report to indicate whether or not the public had been queried about what was a reasonable location. And to me, that seems to be very important. If we're saying that GIS is showing our current users are well distributed, it's not really suggesting necessarily that the mall is the place to be and that it would seem prudent to just take a small delay to actually ask the community um what their thoughts are about a location before we commit to three years and I, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars of our money um at the mall. Thank you.
Leo Gonzalez?
Right, me again. This is an item I really wanted to speak on. Uh but I do remember for the record that that when um previous council was discussing locations, I did sit there and there was some public input regarding the location. So I do want to go on the record and say that it, that it happened. But uh not so much over the approval or not the approval, as much as a concept. Something that I've noticed in this community um for future concept, or maybe even this one, um I think it would be really neat if the city worked along with the college, seems to be a good relationship there, and the historical society to kind of bring everybody together and create the library is more like a learning center. Uh it seems to be that these areas, um places like this, that kind of factor in entertainment with learning and family environment seem to be really uh successful in, in other cities, and I think Moreno Valley would be no different, given the amount of young families that are here. So if, if the historical society uh could, you know, find some artifacts or some that nice little display frames uh in the library, I think that'd be really cool. As a matter of fact, there is one that in particular, um many of you don't know or maybe don't know, there used to be an old water tunnel that used to bring water from Big Bear to uh, uh from Moreno Valley to Big Bear or from Big Bear to Moreno Valley, and it's right off of Redlands Boulevard. I actually driven, drove by there today. The, the ruins are still there. So I think it'd be really neat if the historical society worked, the city preserved that, kind of rebuilt it and made that as a, as a centerpiece. Uh and you know, the old Highway three ninety-five used to go through here. There's a lot of history here that all people don't know about, and I think it'd be really neat if uh they use, uh the city used the library to, you know, start educating folks on this stuff. So that was just my two cents. Thank you.
Leo, okay, council deliberation. Seeing there's no um, yeah, okay. Councilmember Cabrera? That's okay. You can go. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to add on to that or actually ask staff. Um it's my understanding that it won't be just any regular, your typical library with just books and tables and shelves. Uh we're taking it a step up, are we not?
Yes, we are. We're adding uh at council's request, actually, we're adding an awful lot of technology to this center. There will be a lot of uh Wi-Fi capacity. Also, the programming, as uh Mr. Gonzalez was requesting, is leaning much more heavily towards training as opposed to entertainment. Yeah, there, there are a number of things that we're bringing into this library that will be more more modern and more in line with what libraries are becoming as opposed to what libraries have traditionally been.
Thank you for that. And uh I do want to say to Leo, I, I think that's a good idea. Definitely, the more people that we can partner up together, um the better. The more manpower we have, the more ideas that can come in and, and you can just bring together. So um I think that's a really good idea.
Okay, uh Councilmember Gaiba?
Oh, thank you. Um I, I just wanted to make a, a comment here that thanks to the foresight, I, I think of the previous council, Councilmember George Price and Councilmember Aladda Jemson. This was close to their hearts, and I think it was George that was actually pushing for putting a satellite in the mall itself. And so it, I think they would be proud and honored to know that their, their vision and foresight is finally coming to fruition through this process. And I just wanted to thank them. At the beginning of the Momentum Movail was one of their driving forces for that. So I wanted to, to comment on that one as well. So um and I, I think personally, i- if, if you could delay it, it would be a nice thing, but I don't know that it's absolutely necessary. I think the public um could have waited and it, um Leo, I don't remember what the public weighed in on uh at the, you know, from last year, but they may very well have, and I just can't remember. But um when I reviewed the site over again with, with staff, public transportation's right there at that end of the mall. It's, it's gonna be located right there by the dental office as well as right across from, yes, an all-you-can-eat buffet. And um so, so there are some valued reasons to have it there at that location um when we reviewed it, so. However, it'd be, it would have been good to have some public input on that. It would have been uh in eyesight. Maybe when we move these things forward, we bring the public more in, 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 in tune with what we're doing. So they do have input, because it is their city. It's, it's not our city, you know, it's our, everybody's city, so, okay? Thank you.
Okay, uh we have Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Uh yes, uh city manager did, um who brought this to the agenda, to be placed on the agenda?
City manager's office, uh because we're we're, Steve is taking, is in our office and he's taking the lead on working with the library and uh selecting a contractor to get the tenant improvements done.
Thank you so much. And uh Steve, I agree with you with the increase in technology. Me, myself, I want a book in my hand, paperback, hardback, large print, whatever. But um what I see with the younger kids and um with, especially with textbooks nowadays, but uh specifically with library books, is that they are, they have Kindles, they have smartphones, they have um the iPads. There's so much technology. There's so much technology out there for downloading books, movies, reference materials, what have you. And my question, when I'm envisioning this, will the Wi-Fi be on during non-library hours, or is the library open during the mall hours, or if you can elaborate on that?
Currently, the plan is that the Wi-Fi will be on all the time. I can't guarantee that you'll be able to access it if you're very far outside of the library itself, but we have thought that since people walk through the mall early in the mornings and all, that we would leave the Wi-Fi on all of the time. The hours, the library initially will not be open every hour that the mall is open. I think we were starting at 45 hours a week to have it open. If it works well, then we'll adjust those hours.
Thank you so much.
Okay, entertain a motion by council?
I'll second.
Motion by Guyba, second by Baca. Please vote. Okay, and it passes 5-0, which is a good news item, and we're going to move on to G2 approval of a $1.2 million Phase 1 citywide slurry seal project. Report of Public Works, Michael Lloyd, right?
Yes, thank you. And just wanted to start this off by saying, you know, that our roads are, obviously, like many of us know, you know, it's a top priority that we need to fix. They're in disrepair right now, and so, this is something that I asked the city manager's office and the Public Works Department to really look to see, you know, what can we do to bring back the slurry seal program? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. Thank you for the opportunity to make a brief presentation on the Phase 1 slurry seal project. With the passage of SB 1 earlier this year, the city anticipates an apportionment of $1.2 million as a first installment later this fiscal year. In subsequent years, we anticipate $3.5 million. As part of the requirements to receive the apportionment, the city must send to the state a project list of eligible expenses. Staff proposes reviving the city's slurry seal program for residential streets with this first apportionment. A total of 105 residential streets would receive the slurry seal. Streets were grouped in order to best maximize the funding, as well as based upon the scoring in our pavement management system. The purpose of the pavement management system is to have accurate pavement data in order to best utilize available funding to maintain and repair the pavement. The scoring within the system is based upon the pavement condition index, which reflects field conditions. For the slurry seal program, the ideal candidates fall between the range of 45 to 70. The proposed 105 project streets fall within this range and will constitute the city's project list submittal to the state for this year. There is flexibility, as the project list can be modified as needed. Staff respectfully requests council to approve the project and adopt the resolution. If approved, the resolution would be submitted to the California Transportation Commission, which is consistent with funding requirements. Also, this action is consistent with Momentum Mobile objective to address deferred maintenance of city infrastructure. This concludes my report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
You, and councilmember Marquez? Council questions?
Yeah, I got a question. Is this guaranteed money? I mean, is it in the, gonna be in the bank soon?
There, as you probably heard on the news, there's some talk of potential referendums of SB 1, so obviously, we have no control over that. But in order to be eligible for the funds, assuming we get past that period, any challenges, we need to get the project list into the state so that it can be incorporated as part of the approved project lists.
And the, how's it determined by how much money we get? Like, we got 1.2, and next year, we're looking at 3 something. How does that determine by the state?
Right, and the state has, it's formula-based, is my understanding, so, and the formula, I think, is driven by such factors as population, size of the city, things of that nature.
And one more. Does this include any new sidewalks and curves, this money? Can it, or can it be used for that?
What we're proposing tonight does not include any sidewalk type of work, however, in the future, if that's a priority of council, we could certainly look to include sidewalks, pedestrian ramps, those types of facilities.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Guyba?
Thank you. Michael, so, this is the proposal that we are going to present to the state. Is there a timeline to begin using this? In other words, is the intention to spend it before we get it, in hopes that we get it, or only spend it after we get it, just in case we don't get it?
My understanding, and we're still working, because this isn't, SB 1 is new, so the details of the funding are still being worked out, is my understanding. However, the latest information that I have is we can't spend it until we have it. It is an apportionment, it's not a grant where we're being reimbursed. So, the plan at this time, my understanding is, assuming no challenges, the funding would become available in January. So, that's the timeframe that we're looking at. However, it could be a little bit earlier, you know, that date is not set yet.
Because I remember having this conversation, I think even with you and with Ahmad, about a year and a half ago, about the slurry seal program and the MPS system, and we went over in my office and everything, it was our wish list. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
So, now, with the apportionment of SB 1 monies, what you're asking us to do right now is to say, let's put this wish list, wish list to an approved program contingent upon receiving that money.
That's, that is correct.
So, if we don't get the money, we can't go forward with the $1.2 million slurry seal program.
That is my understanding.
We would have to go back to some other type, I know Michelle looks like she's ready to, we'd have to go back to some kind of slurry seal program without this money, is what we'd have to do, right?
Yes, thank you for letting me jump in.
I know, I saw you.
Please know that infrastructure is one of the top six priorities identified in Momentum Mobile Strategic Plan, so if there is any way whatsoever that we can ask the council to front some money to get this addressed as soon as possible, we'll do so. So, we'll keep working with the state and looking at the guidelines, and the city attorney's looking at me, so we certainly wouldn't stretch any guidelines, but everything we can do within our power to get the infrastructure needs of the city addressed in a timely fashion, and as soon as possible, we will do.
All right, any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Sorry, yes, sir, we have two people.
Okay.
Tom Gerald and Robert Palomares.
Tom?
Tom Gerald, again, speaking, I have myself, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers, members of the staff and the public, in the chambers, watching at home on MTV or on the internet. Just for the record on the item prior about the library, I support the mall location. I think it's good. If we lose that mall, we got big problems, so I think it will be helpful. The slurry seal, I support strongly. It's, you know, when our roads kick, they go fast, and something I want to remind you, we live in a rough climate for asphalt, very hot in the summer, very dry, and then occasionally we get a big storm comes through once in a while, and that's not a good thing, a hot pavement, and then long cold winters, so tremendous amount of temperature differential and really degrades roads. I've been back east, and weather asphalt really holds up, even though they've got snow and rain and all that stuff, but their moisture is good on that product. But here, like I said, we got a tough climate, especially in Moreno Valley, because we're kind of ran the edge, and so, the desert and, you know, the coastal areas, so we kind of get both extremes. So, you know, it's the old adage, a stitch in time saves nine, and so I really, really support it. And I know, just for a little personal plug, the streets of my area, Simeon Ranch, are rapidly deteriorating. I was shocked when I walked them about a year ago, and I spoke about it, so I don't know where we are in the slot, but, you know, I'll put a plug in for our area there. And, but one other thing I'd like to speak about, which I also spoke about, is you might, it's a force multiplier, that of weed abatement, because you won't be able to do the whole city. And particularly now, if we hit it before the wet season, knocks out the weeds, it'll stop the growth, it'll keep them down for the winter, hit them again in the spring, and I think that's pretty inexpensive. And, you know, I think we ought to really, really scrounge for some money, see if we can find it. I think it'll make us look good, because it's preventative maintenance thing, so if the roads we can't do, will be protected a little better, because you can tell you from personal experience, running a, you know, 30-year-old facility, that mother nature tears these things up. So, that's my comment, and I thank you for listening.
We have Robert Palomares as the next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Robert.
Mayor Protem, councilmembers. I agree with Tom. Maybe, you know, if we can find the money, we can kind of move ahead, because, you know, with the rains coming, I think this is kind of a priority thing we need to do, and, because potholes don't discriminate, you know? And if, you know, it affects you more than just hitting a pothole, because you start to throw your alignments off, you know, front-wheel-drive cars, and especially when it rains, fills a pothole, you don't see it. You just feel it. But I think that's a good thing, if Michelle can maybe find a way to find some money and start it a little early, it'll benefit everyone. I remember, because it's probably been a while since we've done that, but I remember Richard Stewart, he took care of his district. Sometimes we didn't even need it, and he was doing it, so he was pretty active up there. But other than that, I'd say I think we should look at it real good. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Robert. Any council deliberation? Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah, and I just do want to add that I've heard many, many comments, as most everybody else here, and we've seen it, we drive on it every single day. We know that a lot of roads need drastic fixing, and so, we're trying to get that done. Fortunately, we're receiving, we will receive money from the state, so this is not something that we're just pulling out of our budget, it's coming to us. So, we're very fortunate to have that, and, you know, if all goes well, we'll receive another blessing next year. We'll receive a larger amount, and we'll be able to fix even more roads around the entire city, and that'll help so many people. So, you know, let's just, let's just keep our hopes up that we're going to receive that money and that we'll receive more next year.
Councilmember Guyba?
Right after the passage of SB 1, I had the privilege of being up in Sacramento and visiting with Senator Roth, representing our city and our region. And Senator Roth actually put forth, and I think I brought this up in one of the council meetings, that there, he'd like us to have a priority list of how we would spend the money to show the public that we're moving forward, and this is not just going to sit there and do nothing. And so, that was his goal, his objective, in after we got the SB 1. We won't go into the debates about Roth's choices and stuff like that. So, that's, when I brought that back and asked us to look at putting that as a priority, I really appreciate that that has been set up in the fashion you did in Mike. Thank you so much. And Ahmad, he's not here anymore, but I know he worked very closely with us to get it done, so. I wasn't an SB 1 fan, but hey, once it's passed, the money's there, we might as well do, do the right thing with it. Okay, thanks.
Go ahead and close the discussion. I entertain a motion to approve this. Motion by Mayor Protem Baca, second by Councilmember Cabrera. Go ahead and please vote. And it's approved 5-0, another good news item. We're going to go ahead and take a five-minute break, and then we will come right back. All right, well, welcome back. We just went on a break. We're back to item G3, which is a resolution of the successor agency regards to refunding bonds, refinancing the bonds. Excuse me, we'll have a report of Financial and Management Services Director, which is Marshall.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city councilmembers. This item follows up from the previous item on May 16, 2017, when the city council approved the initial steps for the refinancing of the successor agency's 2007 tax allocation bonds. The bond refunding opportunity was further reviewed by the Oversight Board, which is oversight to the successor agency. From that, we had to send this issue to the State Department of Finance to get their approval as well, and we did receive that approval from them on July 10, which allowed us to move forward on this date. Now, one of the things that we've been working with, with the financing team during this process, is working with standard employers to get an additional bond rating on these tax allocation bonds. I'm pleased to announce to the city council and the public, as well as with these bond issues, we actually received a three-step rating increase. They brought us up from A- to double A- on these tax allocation bonds, which may not sound as exciting that way, but when we talk about that provided an additional 25% in savings to the city, that's where that credit rating agency, you know, really pays off to the city. And that's, you know, some of the main drivers in that is the development that continues in the city, the tax, or the assessed values in that area, along with just strong management and drive within the city. So, as a result of this rating increase, as I said, our projected annual reduction in bond payments will be about $682,000 for the first seven years. This will have essentially an impact to the general fund of approximately $86,000 per year of savings, and this will change based on the market. So, following direction from council tonight, we'll go for pre-pricing on August 22, and pricing on August 23, so as long as the market stays stable, we should see similar savings in that. And the report this evening really recommends the adoption of the resolution by the city council to authorize the form of the preliminary official statement in connection with the sale and delivery of the tax allocation refunding bonds, and authorizing actions related to the issuance of these refunding bonds. With that, that concludes my report.
Okay, and you said it was $86,000 annual savings?
Yes, with the structure, it's estimated $86,000 annual savings, and that essentially comes back into the general fund through property tax dollars.
Okay, thank you. Marshall for the report. Do we have any council questions? Public comments? Madam Clerk?
None.
See no deliberation on here? I entertain a motion by council to approve. Okay, moved by Councilmember Guyba, second by Mayor Protem Baca. So, it's Guyba and Baca. Vote. It's approved 5-0. We're going to go on to item G4, which is adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code to add Chapter 1440, adopting regulations for the planting and maintenance of trees within the city, and authorize the mayor to sign the application for Tree City USA designation. Report to Public Works Department?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers. Candace Castle, our special districts division manager, will present this item.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council, Candace Castle, special districts division manager. This item is the first reading to adopt an ordinance to amend the municipal code and add a section related to care of the city's trees. The ordinance provides guidance for planting, maintaining, and if necessary, removing public trees. It also designates the Parks and Community Services Department and the Public Works Departments as the departments responsible for management of the city's approximately 28,000 trees. During development of Momentum Mobile, our stakeholders identified preserving and maintaining the city's trees as a priority. In response, the city council included receiving Tree City USA designation as a goal in our strategic plan. Adoption of the ordinance will satisfy the remaining standards, which were established by the Arbor Day Foundation for Tree City USA application. Receiving Tree City USA designation is not only a prestigious designation, but it will also provide the city with additional opportunities to apply for urban forestry grants, and more importantly, demonstrate our commitment to our environment, quality of life for our citizens, and beautification efforts. Along with this order- Along with this ordinance, staff is also working on amending our administrative tree management policy, which will provide additional detail to those members of staff who are responsible for the city's management of its urban, the city's employees who are responsible for the management of our urban forestry. Staff respectfully request that the council introduce and conduct the first reading by title only of the tree care ordinance.
Any council questions? Please push your request speaker buttons. We have Councilmember Gaiba?
Candace, how long you been with the city?
Seven years.
I know that, I just wanted you to say that. And so we've worked together for seven years, for all intents and purposes. And I remember when you came on, how long did it take you to log and enter every one of those trees when you were working with the Hidden Springs Residence Committee?
Well, I can say for the special districts trees, they're about fifteen thousand trees. We dedicated a staff member full-time, it was just over a year, and that individual, he is now retired, but he was a certified arborist. He, it took him over a year to log our, to GPS fifteen thousand trees. I know the Maintenance and Operations Division has also inventoried their inventory of trees, which is about twelve thousand trees. I'm not quite certain how long it took them, but the fifteen thousand, it was over a year. That data is extremely useful and beneficial to the city for a number of reasons. When we go out in the special districts and we monitor, we maintain our trees, we actually upload that data into that GIS database, and so now we have a record of exactly how we are caring for those trees within those districts. And that information is also valuable data that's used a number of ways.
I wanted you to pat yourself on the back, you deserve it. Working with us up in the Hidden Springs area, you're the one that introduced this process of logging and entering because of our concerns up there, and I just wanted to thank you for those efforts that you did, and it's coming to fruition.
Thank you, I will pass that along to my staff, they are the ones that implement it.
Please do, I just saw Danny Monday, as we were both surveying the burn areas. Don, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, I just wanted to ask, I think, two questions here. The first one, I actually went through their report, I think it's Tree City USA, I went through their report. And a part of it is, or one point that they would like us to push, is planting trees. So do we have any, like, estimate or some kind of number or a goal, a set, you know, in terms of how many trees we want to plant? Or, I know we had the Community Day of Service where we were doing, we integrated something similar to this. Do we have anything in the works, something planned?
Councilmember, it's a very good question. As part of this whole bracing of the Tree City USA, there'll be multiple divisions that are involved in the administrative policy that I had touched on, and those will be some of the discussions that we will be having on how we increase the number of trees within our community so that we grow that twenty-eight thousand. And I just want to point out that twenty-eight thousand only represents the public trees. It's not Mr. and Mrs. property owners' trees. But yes, that, this is just the very beginning where we will sit down and we will start evaluating those, those needs of the communities and the desire.
Thank you. Yeah, I sat down with, I believe, is Marshall and, I can't believe who else. I can't remember who else, but we were talking about, you know, volunteer opportunities, and I thought that Community Day of Service went really well, and a lot of people turned out. So hopefully, you know, we see more of that, and we get the community involved. You know, I'll definitely be there.
All right, do we have any public comments, Madam Clerk, on this item?
Yes, sir. Kathleen Dale and Tom Gerald. Again, Kathleen Dale. I sent everyone an email earlier today, and I wanted to just ask you to please consider one minor addition to the proposed municipal code provision, and it relates to the section that deals with the characteristics for new plantings. And I don't know how many people are aware, but trees can actually contribute to global warming. And there are three different categories of trees based on their, what's called biogenic emissions. There are low ozone-forming potential trees, medium and high. And the Cal State San Luis Obispo actually maintains an online database, it's called Select Tree, and I gave you the link for that site, where you can query trees by, and these are all trees that are, you know, suitable for our general area, query them by various characteristics, including their biogenic emissions. So if you go and select low biogenic emissions, it brings up ninety-two trees. So it's a fairly extensive palette that's available. And I'd like you to consider just including in the criteria for new plantings that the city selects tree types that are low biogenic emission or low ozone-forming potential trees. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Gerald.
Tom Gerald, again, speaking, I have myself, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, staff and the public, chambers and watching at home, MTV or the internet. After, I'm very proche, very proche, and it's one of the things that I, when I spoke about development, can bring, you know, a properly planned project can bring some nice greenery to our area, and there's many benefits of that. After I served on the city's original general planning committee from, it was like mid-eighty-five to sometime eighty-eight, I think, before we wrapped it up, you know, I looked around for where I may be able to continue to be involved, and I joined the, what was then called Trails Committee, and then became recreational trails, and then we merged with the Bike Committee, but long story short, it was about a ten-year run. But the primary reason I did that, a concept I attempted to introduce, in fact, it is in the original general plan, was that of having, and I gotta use the words, an emerald necklace. We can't say the emerald necklace, because I think Boston copyrighted it. My hometown of Cleveland, the people, the planners there way back in the nineteen twenties had enough vision to realize that the farmers were actually cutting, clear-cutting a lot of trees, so. And they envisioned that'd be travel by air, and they wanted to be able to come into the city and see by air a ring of greenery around the city. And they did a masterful job with that. So I kind of borrowed that idea, and I wanted to bring here with a large trail program that could ring the city, and like, be like a string of garland on our hills there and stuff, where kids could go play and, you know, go on hikes, and, you know, it'd be beauty and, of course, the environmental benefits. So I, you know, that's why I went on that committee. And didn't quite have the success I wanted, but, you know, I gave it the old college try. But here we are, so many years later, and it's still plugging away, so I support this. I would suggest that you might research Israel. One day I went to, I think it was the Ralphs, maybe the Ralphs, and I bought a box of matzo crackers, I like them. And as I was eating them, I'm looking at them, reading the lips, it's product of Israel. And here, this is, when you buy this box of crackers, we plant so many trees, or a tree or something, in Israel. And then I've heard more from a pastor than the era, what an incredible job Israel's done of reforestation. Now, it's actually benefited their climate, and that that area was much more forested back in ancient times. Our area, I was told by Jimmy Maxwell, who's a long, long, long time guy, been around, he was, I think he's still on the Historical Society, told me this area had quite a bit of trees a hundred-plus years ago, and the farmers chopped them down and burned them up for firewood and made furniture out of them, so particularly scrub oaks. So I was wondering, when you go down to Mecca, what do you have there, areas like that? They got those beautiful trees there, and we didn't have, well, they were here too. So I support this, I hope we can expand it, and I might suggest you provide some direction, maybe a Trails Committee to, this'd be a good idea for along our trails and stuff. Give shade and beauty and, you know, be a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, any deliberation? Entertain a motion?
No, I pushed the button, I guess it didn't come up again, or?
Oh, there it is, okay. Councilmember Gaiba?
Thank you very much. You know, the, I think you still have the plaques on the wall, so I want to comment. The HSR to see when we did those, we did tree plantings. We actually got the grants, and I think it was Eastern Municipal Water District had trees for us to plant, and then the community itself came out and planted all those trees, so that's something to consider. And do you still have a copy of my Adopt a Tree program? Because I wondered if you could incorporate that into it as well, so.
I'd have to look, council member, to see if I, if I had a copy of that, but these are all good ideas.
That we can incorporate, and how about Ms. Dale's suggestion also to take a look and incorporate that in the plan?
We actually have started looking at what she sent us, and the planning official just actually sent us an email while we were sitting in the meeting. He's actually in his office doing work on this specific item, among a couple other things. But what we would like to do is, once we've had an opportunity to thoroughly review that, then we can consider incorporation into the tree management policy of that, of that data.
So I'm assuming this is a flexible program, we can keep on adding and building on it?
Yes, yes.
Great, wonderful, I like it, thank you.
For Cabrera?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to both speakers. I think both are very good ideas, definitely if we can explore that, just putting certain kind of trees, vegetation as a priority as opposed to others. And I know we're already doing that, we're implementing that in places around the city. You know, drought-resistant plants, plants that require less water, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, maybe we can explore that, but bring that back. And for Tom as well, I actually read a book a while back called Let There Be Water, and it's about Israel, and how it took them seventy or eighty years or so, but they went from, you know, desertification, all desert, and now you look at aerial shots of their deserts, and it's lush forests, huge forests. So it took them a while, but, you know, you have to start somewhere, and we might even be able to do that here, so.
So I'm pretty much hearing there's consenses for this item, and then we'll give you guys some time to look into some of those other items. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
So move.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Gaiba, second by Mayor Protem Baca. Please vote. And again, this is the first reading anyways, so there has to be a second reading, and that'll be in the consent calendar. Okay, we'll move on to item G six, which is request for city sponsorship of Cinemat Culturas, the fourth annual film fest. Report, city manager.
Do I get to give the report, Mayor? I know that you and Councilmember Cabrera are very excited about this as well. But I'll start, if that's fine.
Sure.
Thank you so much. This report recommends that the city council approve the request to sponsor a, a new cultural event that we hope will come to Moreno Valley. The request is by the Cinema Culturas, I don't say that right, I don't think, Culturas?
Culturas.
Okay. Film Fest, celebrating contemporary Latino film, local heritage and community. The film fest is scheduled to be held October twenty-seventh through the twenty-ninth at R. Harkins Theater in Moreno Valley. As I said, staff is really excited about the opportunity to have the city sponsor this. It's an annual event committed to promoting the artistic, academic, and professional advancement of Hispanics, and providing a forum for the richness and variety of all cultures, Spanish-speaking as well as non-Spanish-speaking. As it says, it's a film festival. It would bring feature-length films, documentaries, shorts, and animated films to the Harkins during that weekend. The specific request of five thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars would cover the rental of the Harkins Theater for the weekend. That's my report, and I, as I said, I think that the mayor and the council member might want to weigh in as well.
Yeah, I'll just weigh in a little bit on this report, and then, you know, I was able to actually visit at Moreno Valley College, they had a screening for a film there. I think this was back in March when I received that invitation. So that's where I really met Dr. Martinez, who is the head of the organization. It's actually a nonprofit organization that's been there already several years. They've held it in Riverside, actually, before, and there were thousands of people that actually attended that event. So this would be the first time ever that our city would ever have a film festival. So, you know, they would attract people from a variety of other cities, regions. And basically, it's pretty much all day. Fridays, like, you know, in the evening, but then Saturday, it's like from twelve to like seven, and then Sunday, the same thing. So, and then they'll show independent films, and then they'll actually have panel discussions, and they're going to bring the actors. So the Academy of Motion Pictures has actually agreed to come to Moreno Valley to do this film festival. So that's why, I think, that's why we want to go ahead and propose this sponsorship. Go ahead and add to it.
As Mayor said, the Academy of Motion Pictures will be coming, as well as Edward James Olmos. If you've ever seen Selena, the movie, or Stand and Deliver, he'll be coming out, and he'll be able to speak to the people, and we can ask him questions. The films, there'll be panels, so you watch the film, and then you can speak to a panel and ask him questions, and actually speak to these people face-to-face. So, you know, this goes along with pushing the arts, promoting the arts, bringing local talent out. And, and I know after the success that the Fourth of July event had over at the, at, what's the name of the school again, Mountain View? People want more of that, our residents, our city are asking for more, and so we're trying to bring that here, and this is another example of it. And per meetings, per discussions, and there will be more as this develops. But it will be taking place October twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth, which is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And right now, I'm trying to figure out, along with staff, how we can help grow the event so that it's not only films, but we also implement other arts. So if we can bring out, like, an art show, so have something set up around the mall, somewhere outside the theater, where we can set up an art show and bring out local painters and artists, and have them showcase their art and their craft, and then just build off of that. So we'll see, we'll see what develops, we'll, we still need to sit down and work out some more details, but this is another, another great opportunity for the community to come together and come out and enjoy themselves, have fun, bring the kids and everything, so look forward to that.
Okay, now we're going to go to council questions, now that we've finished the report. We'll go to, start off with Councilmember Gaiba?
Yeah, have you looked into working with the Arts Commission? They have lots of these specialty arts things that they do with the city. And partner with the Arts Commission, and I believe they have an art facility on the east side in one of the shopping centers, which should be a partnership with that group as well to help forward their desire to take this a little farther. You know, I ask if you've considered that, if you haven't considered it, consider it.
We met with Councilmember Cabrera and Mayor Gutierrez yesterday, and that was one of the things we talked about, especially with regard to supporting the Art Walk. Potentially, in fact, the art commission's, the art commission's Arttoberfest is October ninth, so that might be a place where we can build some momentum as well.
Counsel, actually, public comments?
Yes, sir. Tom Gerald.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of the staff and the public, in the chambers and watching at home. I really support this project, and I want to thank those who, you know, helped to bring it forward. You know, bluntly, I think you pulled off a coup, and did you say it was like five thousand dollars? That, well, again, I mean, that's, that's nothing, I mean, that's, I mean, I'm fiscal conservative, and it's not free money, but, you know, it's a good use of money, it's a darn good use of money, so I'm, it's really neat. And I didn't know about celebrities, Councilman Cabrera told me a little bit about the concept some time ago, but tonight I got a nice surprise with these celebrities, and, you know, nice thing, you talk about Edward James, I love that guy, he's a cool dude. So they have not only reach within the Latino community, which is very big in Moreno Valley, but, you know, they penetrate the entire, you know, entertainment world there, so. So it's a good thing for the city, I commend the, you know, members that brought it forward, and I pray that we'll get behind it, not only as a council and as a staff, but as a city. It's a good thing, it's something we need to embrace, we need to make these people feel comfortable and want to come back, you know, so it's a good thing. And again, it's a good shot in the arm for our mall, which is probably not doing as well as they'd like, so it's, it's a good thing. So it's that type of out-of-the-box thinking, and it's one of those things I've always told, mentioned to Mike Lee about, one of these abstracts that, you know, something he can share when we're trying to pitch somebody to bring a plant or a facility or an office building here, that, hey, that's one of the things we do, along with our great concerts and other events in the city, so. Anyhow, thank you.
And then just to mention as well, it also provides a variety of types of films, so it's not-
So it's not, even though it's called, you know, Latin Film Festival, but it's a variety of different types. And another component that they're also proposing, the nonprofit organization, is that they will provide screenings. So basically, throughout the year, they're going to be doing screenings of independent films. So they'll be providing those out here, too. So that's a really great thing as well. Okay? I'm going to go ahead and close the discussion and call for the vote.
We have two more speakers.
Oh, there's two more. Okay.
Laura Banks and Luis Palomares.
Sorry about that. I only heard Tom.
I slipped it in there really quickly.
Oh, okay.
No, this is exciting. Thank you, council and everybody. Laura Banks, as a parent of two children here in Moreno Valley, and then working in the community, this is amazing to have something like this. However, I was just wondering if you could consider, I'm sure there's maybe an entry fee for, you know, submitting your work, but we have a lot of young talent. We have a lot of young blossoming from, from the elementary, middle school, high school levels. Is there a way, I know I spoke to Councilman Marquez, not on this matter, but things on this, about showcasing our, our youth, you know, and this is a perfect avenue for them, but making maybe their entry, whether it's free or very, very minimal for that age? Because, you know, we, we do have some underprivileged children here, but we can't let that, you know, stop, stop-forward moment, you know, movement with them, and this is, so I'd just love for you guys to consider that for our local talent, please. But thank you. This is great.
Thank you, Laura, for the comments. Thank you.
Wow, somebody's talking louder than me out there. Anyway, this is so great. Oh, golly, it just brings a lot of joy to me that, you know, the mayor and the council is doing something this good in our community. I mean, when has this ever happened? Gee, we're really going forward. We're doing better than the White House. I think we're doing better than the White House taking our city forward than that president, well, fake president. I better get off that one, is doing better than running the country here. Because, you know, it's about city. It's not about my agenda, your agenda, their agenda. It's about community, what we need for the community here, for our youth, our people here in the community. We're a community of so many different cultures here, and this is going to embrace them all. This is, this is fantastic. I mean, you know, it's a new day in Moreno Valley. Finally, finally, thank God. Ah, prayers get answered sooner or later. Just got to hang in there and be patient. But after, you know, I've been here like 28 years, 30 years almost, I lost count, but I've never seen this much going on in our community. And it's, it's fantastic. It's great. It's awesome. I can't even use any other words than that. Marvelous, everything. Thank you so much, council, for bringing this to our community, and wow, I can't wait. Thank you again.
Thank you, Luis. Any more speakers, Madam Clerk?
No more.
Okay, I'm going to close the public comments. Any deliberation? Okay, seeing none here. I'll entertain a motion to council.
So moves.
Okay. Moved by councilmember, okay, Councilmember Carrera, and then, okay, second by Marquez. It's approved 5-0. We're going to move on to item G seven, and that's the resolution of amending rules of procedure for council meetings. And I believe this is a staff report from the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. This report before you is here to consider changes to the policy for rules and procedures for council meetings. Two of the proposed changes are basically a cleanup or a catch-up. One is a proposed change in the process of how items are placed on agendas. The first one, there was still some leftover language in the policy that dealt with a appointed or selected mayor on an annual basis, obviously since we have gone to a directly-elected mayor. That verbiage was not corresponding with, with our system, so the section is proposed to be changed. Section 4.2 will be amended to reflect the directly-elected mayor. The other one, section 1.1, 2.1, which is Order of Business, simply catches up the way the agenda is structured. You've been doing this, I think, since the new city clerk has been here. The policy still reflects the older verbiage in the agenda items, like legislative actions and business. We are cleaning it up and removing that. The third item is the manner in which agenda items are placed on the agenda currently. The mayor, the city attorney, city manager, as well as two council members can place an item on the agenda. We have experienced instances where two council members elect to put an item on the agenda. A lot of work is done by staff, may not necessarily be in the direction, takes away from the efforts towards the strategic plan and other incentives that are moving forward by, by the council. And then the council has basically no interest in hearing it. Secondly, and probably more importantly, in number of cities that I've surveyed and the ones I've worked with, placing items on agenda is a transparent process, and that process happens in an open meeting. So what staff is proposing is that if an item is of interest to a council member or two council members, that that item be introduced or proposed at a open council meeting. If there's consenses, or at least three of you are interested in directing staff to do work on that item, that item will appear on the agenda following that selection. So that's a change that's being proposed. The resolution that, that is attached institutes these changes, should you select to, to make those. With that, I'll submit and answer any questions you may have.
Any council questions? This is G seven. Okay, Councilmember Marquez? Oh, sorry.
Got it?
Yeah.
Martin, on this, when you say expense of time to do research by staff, in other words, a waste of time, if it's not going to go any further on the console here. You say three votes from the council to put it on. I think this is bad practice for the simple reason is, when you have, when you're the minority on the dais, or even majority, it can go either way. A lot of your, your residents aren't going to have a say-so over this, because maybe your representative wants to put something on the, on the agenda. So he won't be able to bring it up, because now the majority says, we don't want that on the agenda. So the public is not going to get heard. Whereas now, if we have two votes, put it on there, you do the research, at least the public knows, hey, council's considering this. But if you have three, I don't think that's going to work, and it's not going to be fair to the general public. That's all I have to say.
Those are more like comments. Okay. Okay, we have, we're going to do questions and, and comments, okay? Councilmember, Councilmember Gaiba?
Martin, how long have you been here?
Almost a year.
Almost a year. You have a comment in your thing that says oftentimes receives no interest. I, I, tell me how you came up with that conclusion, because I've been on this council longer than you've been with the city. And when two council members have put something up on the agenda, there has always been discussion on that item. How do you come up with the conclusion that oftentimes receives no interest, or even discussion at the actual meeting?
Councilmember Gaiba, I will point your attention to the last item that you and I have spent a lot of time meeting and drafting and crafting, which was the proclamation policy. When that item finally arrived at the, at the agenda, three of the council members decided basically to table it. And, and it never went anywhere. It didn't move forward. It wasn't heard. In the past, there's been a couple of other instances. One of them, I watched painfully, unfortunately, I believe in August, or maybe early September of last year, where apparently two different pairs of council members provided direction to the city attorney to prepare two different things that related to the same item. And that item ended up basically being discussed, and a lot of acrimony took place, I'll describe it, and, and again, no action was taken on that. Maybe oftentimes was a, was an overstatement, but, but there have been instances where certainly where that has occurred.
So may I ask you a question? Do you find it improper for public discourse to take place, whether it's acrimony or to throw it off the dais? Because even if three council members decide they don't want it, at least the public knows the position of that majority, and the public had an opportunity to read and to hear something that, in many times, is brought to the attention of the council member himself or herself. And that, you're saying then that, that, am I incorrect in suggesting that the energy put forth, may I ask you, the energy put forth to prepare this on behalf of the public's knowledge, whether accepted by the full council or not, i- is not appropriate?
I'm sorry, I'm not following your question.
Is it not appropriate as representatives of this city to bring forth questions and concerns that our residents want to know about, and they look toward the, the representatives to bring that information forward? Is that appropriate or not?
Absolutely, and I'm not suggesting anything else other than that happens. Every one of you, under the proposed system, will have an opportunity to bring up any concerns that the public might have in an open meeting. And if the council is interested in directing staff to expend the resources and the time on doing so, you will do so, and that item will get fully vetted and discussed.
But that item can be fully vetted? If two members ask that it be brought forward for full vetting, rather than, correct me if, you know, my questions aren't accurately concerned, because I'm trying a question system here for you. Don't the residents themselves have a right to hear what the staff has put together on a question of concern, and have the council deliberate and discuss? And if that final discussion says, no, I don't go along with it, then fine. But then that discussion, that discussion cannot take place unless there is a report on that discussion. My throat's going, okay? I'm sorry.
Last item that ended up in front of the council on that matter received no discussion. But the item is before you to consider, most of the places that I have been either serving as a city attorney or have talked to or asked on listserv, staff resources are expanded with the direction from the majority of the council. This system that is in place currently here doesn't have that. It also doesn't have transparency. One of the things that we're always very careful about and have concern about is that if a council member says, hey, you know, I'd like to get this on the agenda, can you find me a second? So now that puts the staff in a position of calling a council member or other council member and saying, hey, there's this item that's being proposed, you know, we're looking for a second. If we get a yes, all right, we have to. If we get a no, now we're calling a third council member.
So am I correct in asking you this question? Hold on. Am I correct in asking this question? Have we not done that already on this council? Has there not already been public, and I agree with you, I don't have a problem with that one, with, on the council, one council member saying, I'd like to put this on the agenda, do I have a second? And we've done that several times here. Am I correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So is there any reason why that cannot continue with only two council members?
The choice, the choice is before you. I've outlined some of the practices that are in other places. The city has a different practice. I think for sake of efficiency and, and for the sake of focus on the tasks that are before us, staff suggested this solution. If it's not acceptable to the council, we can stay with, with the system as it exists or change it otherwise.
I'll continue my deliberations on this whole topic.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and move it to Mayor Protem Baca.
When I, when I first read this resolution, and I, of course, I like to do my homework ahead of time, and I meet with the city manager, with the city attorney, with the city clerk, if I have any questions on the agenda. And when I first read this, I said, what a great idea, because we're bringing this to the public, it's televised, and you could put big headlines that say transparency, because now, as a council, we're telling you what's going to be on the agenda, what we're going to be discussing, and we'll have support from the council. And we are here to give you direction. We're not micromanaging. We're giving you direction on what we want and what we're going to discuss in the future. So I, I fully support this resolution. I like it. I like the way it's written, and I'm hoping that my fellow councilmen support it. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move on to public comments.
Evening, and last one before my voice goes as well. I wanted to just address what's been the focus of your discussion, which is this change regarding how an item gets put on the agenda. I like the proposed change that requires that these actions happen in open forum, and I, I can understand the city attorneys and staff's frustration if they're being asked to go find a second. I think that the proposal to make a majority support an item before it's put on the agenda is very bad. And it just so happened that there was a recent similar circumstance in the city of Oceanside, where they actually did approve going to a three-vote requirement. And I sent you all the commentary that was written by a community member about that and why it's a bad idea. And some of the reasons that they cited were that, gosh, I'm going to have trouble reading now, too, that it denies the right of individual city council members to bring forward community issues, as Councilmember Gaiba indicated, and it disenfranchises those voters, and essentially results in taxation without representation. It also squelches minority opinions. It ends up being a form of censorship. And it gives a sad appearance of a predetermined outcome if it takes a majority to even bring something forward for discussion. And I've been here and following city actions for a long time, and honestly, I cannot remember, you know, probably more than 10 items in 30 years that have had significant expenditure of staff resources and, and, you know, not gone forward. I think that in that article, it also mentioned two cities, I can't remember, I think it was Escondido, a national city, where it actually only takes one council member to put an item on the agenda. So there, there is a significant variation in practice, and I think that you should try to protect the rights of the citizens and of individual council members to bring forward matters that are of concern to the people in their district. So please, just change, change it back to two votes required to put something forward and have that happen in open session. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Gerald.
Followed by Luis Palomares.
Thank you again, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, members of the staff and the public. Yeah, I briefly reviewed the resolution before the meeting, and I won't pretend to be a legal expert, it's the first time I saw it. And, but bluntly, I like to hear the dissenting opinion. I listened to quite a bit of talk radio and... I listen to quite a bit of talk radio, and some of it's goofy, some of it's pretty well-grounded, but some pretty bright people will talk many times about Supreme Court rulings, they'll say, "You know, you need to read the dissenting opinions on some of the things the judges said about it." And there's some great wisdom in there. I was thinking back to, if you haven't, do some research on how much fighting went on when we formed this country, putting our constitution together. I mean, it got brutal, and we used to drink a lot those days, too, so I'm sure it got pretty wild and crazy. In fact, there was a good narration I heard on it, that it was very hot at that time, and so tempers tend to flare, and the weather broke out of the, and all of a sudden, everybody kinda calmed down and got together. But the point is that, you know, a lot of people fought over a lot of things, slavery, which is a big issue today because of what's happening in Charleston, and, you know, the Robert E. Lee statute, you know, that, there was a minority opinion to take slavery out, and it was not the majority at that time. You know, the world was doing it prolifically, and we were doing a lot in this country. But, and the minority was able to get something in at a constitution, and it eventually led to the end of emancipation, and that was a good thing. So, it's very, very important. You know, I learned from the dissenting opinion, don't have to agree with it, but many times, somebody come up with ten points of their agenda, and, you know, five, six, seven of them, eight, nine of them might be junk, nine and a half might be junk, but one, one and a half, yeah, that's a good idea. You can integrate that into a good plan, and make better governance. So, anyhow, so I like that. One quick comment, I don't know if this is the place, but we recently decided to take away comments on item H, the reports, and, you know, I don't like that. I mean, that's a thing I, you know, many times I have questions about that, and I don't think it's that time-consuming, and, you know, I want a little clarification, hear something about it. So, anyhow, those are my comments, and I thank you for giving me here.
Thank you, Tom, appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move into council deliberation.
Luis.
Sorry, Luis. Is there anyone else after Luis?
None.
No? Okay.
Okay, this is a tough one, and I don't really have too much of an opinion on it, only because, when we didn't have a council member in the fourth district for, what, November all the way till June, it didn't matter, these two in the end, Guyba and Marcus, they put so much garbage on the agenda, and drug out so much stuff, you know, a bunch of nonsense in my book, that's my opinion for what it's worth. And also, we were without a council member, you know, we could've did an appointment, but, well, you know, people wanted to vote, I get that. But, look at how long it took. And everything with these two at the end, Guyba, you know, obstructionist, if you ask me, only for that reason. But otherwise, I like the way it is, but that's my opinion. But these two, when we only had, you know, four council members on there, it was a mess. It was a mess for months. And they did everything in their power to be the number-one obstructionist. And Marcus, you know, I know Kathleen Dale's always texting you, and that's how you could speak about these things, 'cause you don't, you don't really got a clue about a lot of it yourself. You know, Guyba does, he does, he knows what he's talking about. But you, you need your mouthpiece back here. That's my opinion, and, oh well, let's see what happens.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and close the public comments, and we're gonna go to council deliberation. Just to clarify, so it's to make it more of a transparent process, and I think that's a good thing, and, you know, the public deserves that transparency, we always talk about it. So it would be in an open process. And I think that if the staff is going to do any work, that the majority should have provided that direction. You know, we're spending lots of money and time, there have been many instances, and where the staff has spent hours, several hours, and then it doesn't go anywhere. It doesn't even go up for discussion. As far as, you know, the minority, and people don't get to weigh in their opinion, actually, you know, at the council meeting, that's when they make the proposal. They would make the proposal to hear that item. So, and they would say, "Okay, I wanna hear, you know, or I want this policy, or I want this program," you know, "at the next council meeting, because of this, this, and that." So that's when they would actually say that, and if the majority doesn't wanna, I mean, you know, it's staff's recommendation. This is what they see in many other cities, and I believe that we wanna be transparent. So I'll leave it at that. We'll do a one-round, three minutes each. Okay?
So, the way I see this item is essentially, everything that we've already talked about, and the momentum that we have right now, everything that we've been able to accomplish, is because we've been able to focus now. All five seats are filled, and there's no more two-two votes, things not getting anywhere. So essentially, when it comes to the staff, us giving them direction, whenever a majority of the council agrees on something, and putting something on the agenda, that gives more time for the staff, all the staff members, to focus in on the priorities, and the direction that the council gives, instead of spending a lot of other time doing things that won't get anywhere. And so that's what I see from all of this, just giving the staff more of a focus, and more time to hone in on the priorities, instead of wasting time.
Okay. Okay, we have Councilmember Guyba.
The cleanup work on this is fine, the problem I'm having is with Section 3.1, the agenda items. I think we're walking a very slippery slope here. This has worked for this city for thirty-five years. And by the way, just so that you know, attorney, I've sat with WRCOG, JPA, RCA, SCAG, League of Cities, and all of them, at the end of the meeting, ask if any one person wants to put something on the agenda. And the staff is very happy to work together for the better of the good. So, there are those that might say, "Well, we have to go three with a majority." The problem with that is that if the majority does not want to listen to the question, and you keep alluding to the one that was tabled, it was obvious why it was tabled, okay? And the public needed to see that. If it didn't, and you say it doesn't go anywhere. The council's supposed to be deliberating, they're supposed to be publicly discussing, there's supposed to be discourse. There should never be predetermined, three council members have decided already. I had conversations with three past, actually more than that, council members who contacted me on this topic, saying, "In our city's history," and this is from our own city, "this is a slippery slope to go down." Because when you do that, you give pure power for agenda items and any discussion to the three people that have the major votes. If my district has somebody, and I'm trying to represent them, they've asked me to bring this forward, I should have a vehicle to bring it forward for discussion. If the majority doesn't wanna discuss it, then my constituents see what the majority has to say by saying, "I don't wanna discuss it." That in itself is a statement to the public. But true discourse, true service to your community, pure honesty, pure transparency, says, "I'm not afraid to bring forward any item and listen to both sides." I think what Tom said was very, very valid, and I appreciate that. Is that the minority discussion is very important in those discourses.
Thirty more seconds.
And if we're all being honest, if we're all being honest with each other, we should be listening to both sides, because your mind, if you're not, your mind's already made up, then what's the value of having public discourse? So, if, unless we change that item, like she said, openly, but for two, I cannot be in favor of this.
No, you weren't on there. Go ahead. Mayor Protem Baca? Sorry, that was the timer for, for Guyba. Yeah, okay, all right. Go ahead.
Well, am I on?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I see this matter as a matter of transparency, and I don't see how anyone wouldn't have any public discourse, because it's going to be discussed in public, instead of, you know, behind closed doors. And it's very transparent, and we will be hearing dissenting opinions, as Mr. Gerald so kindly presented to the council. So I don't see how we can argue that there isn't any transparency. I like it, and I already said that, I hope that we can support this. Thank you.
Okay. Last council member to speak is Councilmember Marquez.
That was a mistake, there's something wrong here, yeah, it's, it's already got me voting.
Oh, okay, all right, well, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the deliberation, and we're gonna go ahead and entertain a motion to approve. Move by Mayor Protem Baca.
Second.
Second by Cabrera. So that was Baca and Cabrera. Baca and Cabrera. Okay, and so, please vote. And it's approved, four-oh, with one no. Okay? And we'll, four-one.
No, I didn't vote yes.
Oh, you didn't vote yes?
I was pushing it.
Oh, okay, so, can you vote no?
Yeah, I voted no. I don't know who that came up with.
Okay, so it's three-two then. All right, we're gonna move on to the item passes. We're gonna move on to item H, reports, and, which is March Joint Powers Authority. Actually, there were, this is actually in regards to several meetings that we had in August. We've been on recess, like a mini-recess. So, over those meetings, we had meetings, excuse me, June 28th, July 12th, and July 26th. Over those meetings, the commission approved the Alessandro Business Park project, a proposed 157,000-square-foot development north of the MetroLink station. We also approved the sublease of some space at, okay, sorry, at the Marchfield Air Museum to the American Aerospace Technical Academy, to operate a vocational training program for aerospace-related jobs. So that's a really good thing, good news item. We also granted a force majeure, that's basically an extension of time, to the March Life Care Project. Basically, the developer there asked for extra time for the project because of issues, you know, that he had. We also heard updates by RCTC on the regional transportation improvements, it was a great presentation by Ann Mayer. And then also, Mr. Jones, I believe that was his name, the director of the EMWD.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, there you go. That concludes my report on the recent March Joint Powers Authority Commission. And we have the next one, which is Councilmember Marquez, which is the RCHCA.
The report I have, Mayor, was back in May, I believe I did that in the June one, so, I'm just not gonna repeat it. You want me to go to RTA?
Sure, yeah, why don't you just do it, yeah.
RTA will launch the first rapid-length goal line in August 28th of this year. The goal line is the first phase of limited-stop bus service that will travel Route 1 between University of California, UCR, and the Corona Transit Center. Rapid length, everyday service will be with buses departing Corona and UCR every fifteen minutes during the peak commuting hours. RTA has offered two free rides to rapid-length service during the first week of its service from August 28th through September 1st. The second phase of limited-stop service, the blue line, will be coming to Moreno Valley in the near future. In addition to the 2,500 RTA bus stops, will receive upgrade signs, which, there'll be bigger "stop here" signs, and include route numbers that are coded colors. So this way, you look at it, you'll see the colors, instead of just letters and numbers up there. Information on the final destination, the RTA contract information, and the universal bus system for non-speaking Spanish users. So, it's gonna help everybody understand them. The project will be completed within the next several months. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Marquez, for the report. We have RCTC, which is Mayor Protem Baca, Riverside County Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. The US Department of Transportation has announced an award of $152 million to RCTC to help finance the construction of the new I-15 express lanes. The funds will come from the Transportation Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act, a rigorous and highly competitive program. The major funding award will offset the local taxpayers' share of the project cost, and will allow the work to begin in 2018. The I-15 express lanes project is approximately fifteen miles in length, and it's from the Cahalco Road to the Riverside-Sambradino County Line. It will reduce congestion, improve quality of life, and deliver commuters valuable time savings. The lanes are expected to be open in the year 2020. Thank you.
Okay, and then we have the WRCOG Executive Committee meeting. The items covered at the WRCOG committee meeting on August 7th, and then during the council recess include, the executive committee approved an update to the Tump Fee calculation handbook to exempt fees for the first 3,000 square feet of new and existing retail and service use development. WRCOG also executed a Tump reimbursement agreement of over a million dollars with the city of Moreno Valley for the Heacock Street widening project. And then the executive committee also gave the go-ahead for staff to draft an opposition letter for Senate Bill 649, which would streamline permits and prohibit local review of small-cell wireless telecommunications facilities and right-of-ways. Moreno Valley has already provided a separate letter of opposition for the item. The approved Tump reimbursement agreement will include over $13 million for the Moreno Beach 60 interchange project as well. Phase 2 will provide the widening of the Moreno Beach drive overcrossing and realignment of the westbound ramps. The executive committee also approved a final draft of the 2016 Tump Nexus Study, which includes implementation of a four-year fee reduction of $3 per square foot for retail land uses, and a two-year freeze phased in at $545 per unit. The executive committee also agreed to add a new Tump fee category for active senior housing projects. The recommended Tump fee adjustments include a 6% increase for single-family residential, a 2% reduction for multiple-family residential, and a 3% increase for industrial. The Round 2 WRCOG Beyond Program, which was another thing, funding allocations were discussed, and Moreno Valley's allocation is $161,000, and will be used for a variety of projects, including the Juan Batista Trail Crossing. The executive committee agreed to add a new Tump fee category for, okay, that's already there, okay, just repeat it, okay. All right, so the Round 2, so that was it? I conclude my report. RCA, which is Western Riverside County Regional Conservation Authority, Councilmember Guyba.
Nothing to report other than this. August 28th, we will be having a joint RCA, RCTC workshop that I'll be attending for that, and then our next meeting is until September for the RCA, 'cause there was nothing really going on, so. I will report on that as soon as I've been to those meetings, for those.
Okay, and then, nothing for the school district, Southern California? Oh, you do? Okay, it's not highlighted. Okay, but go ahead. Oh, mine isn't.
All right, I'd like to report on the Joint Task Force meeting. Thank you, Mary Gutierrez. The Joint Task Force met earlier today, and I wanna say thank you to Councilman Cabrera for attending with us. We also had representatives from the Moreno Valley Unified School District, we had Board President CJ Johnson, and Dr. Ketidora, the superintendent, we had representative from the Parr State Park, Moreno Valley Police Department, and many departments from the Moreno Valley Unified, Moreno Valley City Council. Moreno Valley City, sorry. The Joint Task Force, in addition to the
Uh, the Joint Task Force, in addition to the, um, city representatives, um, that I mentioned, uh, Lake Paris is going to be the site for canoeing and rowing for the twenty-twenty-eight Olympics. No, we can't get tickets yet, no, we can't reserve our parking, but be looking out for it. Uh, Lake Paris also reported on their Junior Lifeguard. It's an excellent program. If you have, um, students that, um, uh, young people, minors, that wanna get into this program, please look into it next summer. Um, the lake is also, uh, being, uh, the dam is actually having repair work done now, and it'll be completed very soon. And once that's done, then the park will have their, their work, um, um, corrected as well from all the damage that's, that's taken place. They also reported that the, um, attendance from, um, visitors has grown over forty percent. And they expect the lake's level to increase forty-four linear feet. So, we're looking forward to that. Moreno Valley College reported that they're anticipating about nine thou- nine thousand students for the, uh, coming, uh, semester. And, um, they're very impressed with the, um, donation from the city, the contribution for their college promise initiative, so we need to, uh, just be very proud of something that we're doing for our community, for our young people that are going to the college. Okay. They also reported on the, the new first annual El Grito event, that's also being sponsored by this, by, um, the City Council, the city, and the school district, and the Mexican consulate. It's gonna be on September the fifteenth, from six PM to nine PM or later. I'm not, uh, sure about the hours, but it's gonna be, uh, simulcast at the same time as Mexico City is having their event, so please come. It's September fifteenth, and it's gonna be held at Moreno Valley College, which is a partner in this event, along with the, um, Mexican consulate and the Moreno Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. There's many organizations, please go online and check it out, and please bring your lawn chairs, your umbrellas, um, I think you could bring in a, um, ice chest, but I'm not sure, but there's gonna be food vendors, or it can, if you are listening out there and you wanna participate, please call the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and get your booth, you can sell things, you can promote things, um, there's, there's so much that's gonna happen that day. And it's our first annual, and we're looking forward to, uh, many more years to come. The Moreno Valley Unified School District reported that all schools opened without major incidents on Wednesday, so all the kids were, uh, welcomed back. There were some, um, the, uh, VIPs that welcomed the kids in costumes. There was one in a Crayola box that looked like our mayor. The superintendent looked like Captain America, but I'm not sure about those things, but, um, go online and, and, and watch what happened on the first day of school. The school district also shared that thirty-two of its forty schools are being recognized by the state for positive behavior interventions and supports program. That's a big number, I, I mean, the superintendent was saying thirty-two of our schools, but I said, "Please tell us how many schools we have." So that's, that's a big percentage. Moreno Valley Unified School District Annual Districtwide Walkthrough is scheduled for August thirtieth, so, um, please, um, participate. And finally, um, our police department shared that we have three new SRO, School Resource Officers, at three of our schools, Vista de Lago High School, Palm, and Badger Springs Middle Schools. So, there's great things happening in our city. Please participate in El Grito, and we have a lot of agencies and partners in this event. Thank you.
SCAG report?
Yep, we got, today, I actually, uh, was at the Legislative Communications and Membership Committee that I also serve on with SCAG. Very interesting, uh, discussion that we had. First of all, our action item was approved, um, our SCAG sponsorship with UCLA Lewis Center and Institute of Transportation Studies. So SCAG is contributing twenty thousand dollars to that symposium that's coming up. But the interesting one here was SB thirty-five. SB thirty-five was authored by Weiner, uh, Planning, Zoning, and Affordable Housing Streamlined Approval Process. League of California Cities took a very strong no support on that whatsoever. Um, you also have the Roth Bill that does a little bit of conflicting with the streamlining process as well. Initially, the SCAG, um, suggested supporting it. But here's what's interesting, and this is what's wonderful about dialogue, discussion, and honesty between different parties. There are seventeen members that represent seventeen different cities and districts throughout the Southern California area. And although SCAG's rec- initially recommended to support it, out of those seventeen members, the first vote that was taken was to absolutely oppose it, but that failed by only nine to eight. The second vote was to oppose unless amended. Now follow this. That was approved unanimously, because the, the discourse and the dialogue and the honesty between all members, I mean, I find this fascinating because I work with all of these Southern California folks, not just within my own city. So initially, there was a nine-eight split, and then the end of the discourse, they all agreed to oppose unless amended. Some of the amendments required, uh, unfortunately, in SB thirty-five, they were requiring prevailing wage, uh, for building apartment complexes. Um, there was no public input, this was, uh, no CEQA oversight, parking requirements, local control, so we're gonna be coming back to this measure. And on August thirtieth, I'll be going back up to Sacramento again to lobby on behalf of Southern California and the cities for them as well. Um, so, ver- very interesting outcome on that one, I thought I'd share that with you. Tomorrow, just so the public understands, I also sit on the SCAG's Big Data Open Data, I was assigned to that one. We have five of those meetings, and they're all in Los Angeles, so I will be there tomorrow for that Big Data Open Data as well, uh, working together so that we can work on this, um, opening up this data to everybody to use, because SCAG is one of the hugest, um, su- suppliers of data and information, as you all well know. The, the, um, Regional Transportation Plan, RCTC, WRCOG, they can't move forward without SCAG's first input with the regional trans- you know that, Mike, the Regional Transportation Plan has to be approved before any of them can move forward with their plans or, as well. So I will be, uh, attending the Big Data Open Data tomorrow down in Los Angeles as well. So, uh, I think that, that pretty well covers it. When I get back on the next meeting, I will, will report back to you on the Big Data Open Data, and then, of course, the, as usual, the first Thursday of every month is my regular SCAG meeting. They were dark for August, but not on these subcommittees. So, um, that's all I have to report on that one, but I thought you guys might appreciate that, so.
Moves on to City Managers Report.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, no formal report this evening, uh, just wanted to, um, acknowledge that, uh, tomorrow, August sixteenth, actually marks the one year, um, since adoption of Momentum Mowau, uh, the city's first strategic plan. So on September fifth, the staff will be presenting a, uh, pretty thorough update with regard to the excellent progress that the council and the staff are making on your priorities and your objectives. You've advanced a number of them tonight with library services, uh, being enhanced, committing funding to infrastructure, and, um, improving quality of life with the sponsorship of the Latin Film Festival, and also your promise initiative commitment as well. Uh, so just wanna give you a heads-up that a, uh, thorough report on the status of your strategic plan will come on September fifth. That concludes my report. Thank you.
City Attorneys, uh, report?
Just briefly, um, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Bautem- councilmembers, I just want to brag on my staff and give you some information. Uh, since January first, uh, we have, uh, with, um, cooperation of PERMA, our claim recovery, uh, on some parts of it, um, basically recovered, uh, approximately two hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars, uh, that went back, uh, into, uh, the city coffers, and this is for recovery of costs, uh, costs on, uh, code enforcement cases, subrogation, uh, recovery for damages to city property caused by other people, um, as well as, uh, recovery for, uh, health benefits, uh, issued on their workers' compensation when they were caused by, uh, by a third party. So, um, with, with your budgetary approval, the addition of the, uh, deputy is already starting to, uh, provide us with the ability to be more active in those areas and, and bring cash in. Thank you.
Councilmember Guyba, did you have a question?
Yeah, I sure did. Thank you, I appreciate that. Martin, wha- what's going on with that, um, marijuana place by Providence Bank? Are we getting that thing shut down finally?
Um, w- we are on our way to doing so. The case has been filed, uh, we have served, I believe, one of the defendants, we're, uh, in the process of, uh, serving a couple of others, and then, um, we're going, to be going into court for injunction, uh, to close on that.
I appreciate that, the, uh, Providence, we're asking, how is that coming? Because I've been there, and I've watched them, I've seen their guards over there with the weapons on them, and, and I took pictures of them, actually, and they didn't like that one either.
We're well aware of it and working on it. Thank you, sir.
Okay. That brings us, uh, to reports and comments from councilmembers who did not speak earlier. Um, Councilmember Guyba.
Save me, I'm gonna rest my voice for a couple minutes, I'll be third or fourth here, okay?
All right, we'll go with Councilmember Marquez.
Hey, I wanna put out, uh, a shout-out to code enforcement. Um, Ellen's gotta tolerate me with, um, all those code and violation things, um. I just wanna say they're doing a good job. They, they, you give them a report, you call in, and they're right on it. Your, your department's just, we're ma- we're making, you know, a pinch out there, it's gonna take a while, but, you know, I wanna say you guys are doing a great job out there, and I, I really appreciate it. Second of all, uh, the resident, one resident here spoke about, he lived on Iris, and it's not inconvenient. Um, just recently, I did some walking out there, I live right down the street also. I spoke to a lot of residents in that area, and they're the ones that tell me it's, it's gonna be chaos, and they, they don't want it done, and why can't it be done in phases? Um, so I wasn't just doing that on my own, it was, I did walking out there, I did talk to residents out there. There is a home right across the street from there, Lloyd isn't there, right up on the hill, sitting by itself. Those residents who live there, they don't want that road closed right now, because for the simple reason how the, they're gonna have problems getting in and out of their property, so they claim. So, that's something we, I know you guys looked at, but it's something to look at again, 'cause they're saying that they're gonna have problems getting in and out. Another comment was made by, uh, a speaker that "I don't care for kids." They didn't have the facts of what happened several years ago at that school. What happened is, it's not, I can't bring it up here, 'cause it's, it's not, um, for the ears of the public to hear. There was things were pretty bad from this organization, and I spoke on behalf of them, of, of the parents that didn't want that organizations in the school districts. So for them to get up here and say, "Well, I don't care for kids," they don't, they don't know the whole facts, and before they get up here, they should know the whole facts. If they get out and talk to the community, they would know that. Another one talked about, uh, being a bookend up here. Well, you know, you got your opinions, and, and, and I appreciate your opinions out there, but no one up here on the dais weighs my, my decision. My decisions are made here on my own, not by anyone else up here. So as a bookend, I don't know what to tell you, but it doesn't happen here. So, with that, I wanna say is that, um, schools are back, there's a lot of kids out there jaywalking. Be careful when you drive around the schools. Valley View is, is to, uh, they, those kids will cross Yuptlitz, and they don't care if a car's coming or not. Be very careful when you're driving around the schools. Elementary, the kids aren't that bad, but it's the high schools, and, um, I've seen it out there, they are bad, so be careful with that. And that's about it, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilmember Marquez, for your closing comments. Councilmember Guyba? Uh, well, actually, you're up, they haven't pushed anything. They haven't pushed any item, so, yeah.
I didn't push it, you just did.
Okay, well, if you're gonna make comments, you, you need to make them today, right now, for this, this moment.
No, I'll, I'll make comments, I just wanted to save my voice, I thought you'd give me that courtesy at least. Okay. First of all, um, through the month of July into, I was invited back to Michigan by my brother and the Sea Cadet Corps from Michigan, uh, where they, he asked me to be an instructor, uh, in both Leadership Academy and in their Medical Academy, and of course, if you folks know me, I have a medical background, as well as a leadership background in the United States Navy and retired Navy, so it was a good fit. So I came back representing, or went back there representing basically our city as a city council member and Leadership Academy, and, uh, so, uh, I spent a week with those, the students, and we visited, uh, we stayed at Central Michigan University, later on spent a day up at, uh, Western Michigan Medical, uh, School, where they had their, um, you know, uh, information on, um, the medical school, and, and fantastic opportunity to, to learn a lot with them. And in the lab activities, we did some wonderful things, uh, there too. So I wanted to share that with you, but I came back, I came back in the second half with pneumonia, so that's why I'm all scratchy, still recovering, unfortunately, I, I must have contracted it somewhere along the line. Uh, second thing, um, the fire up there, I've lived up in Hidden Springs for twenty-seven years. That's not the first fire. Um, we've had fires that have gone all the way down to Pigeon Pass. Um, but what I wanna tell you is that, um, I watched it from my balcony, um, the neighbors, I was, was able to report, I was on the phone with, um, with Abdul, the Fire Chief, throughout, so he kept me up with what's going on. And then, uh, um, yesterday, I was out on the street, I, um, I ran into Dan and from, uh, Candace's, one of Candace's people, and there were, uh, multiple fire units from Orange County, from Riverside, and all of them were out there, and yesterday, they were out washing down all of the, the, the Foz gene, I guess, or whatever they call it, the Foz, whatever, the foam that they would dump. And, uh, so I was going around to all of the individuals who were mainly affected and speaking with the, the residents, and thanking the fire department for their hard work. Um, I wanna thank Dave Marquez, um, he took also the time on my behalf to come up to Hidden Springs to talk to some of the residents, um, who were basically s- sent away, you know, they were mandatory, uh, on the west, uh, on the west side of Hidden Springs Drive. So thank you, David, for that, um, going and, and representing the city in that manner, I thought that was, that was good, and, and especially on my part, since I was already having trouble talking, so, uh, I appreciate, appreciate that tremendously. My last comments, very important. At the end of the agenda, on, I was gonna read for you, at SCAG, it said, "Future Agenda Items. Any committee member or staff desiring to place items on a future agenda may make such a request." Any person. These are major, major organizations that respect the fact that everybody has a right to think. So I just wanna tell my community out there, I was elected to represent the entire city and district too. Anytime a majority, and by the way, this isn't transparent, because you cannot discuss or debate an item that is not on the agenda. So if you're putting it on the agenda, you can't have discourse and discussion on it. You can only do that once the item's been put on the agenda. And so I disagree vehemently with those comments about transparency. I do agree, putting it on there publicly is good, but by having only two, we get the opportunity for all of our residents to request information, which is their right to have. Whenever a majority controls that right, they will put on what they want or exclude what they don't want. That was the slippery slope I'm talking about. The rules themselves are not bad, it's the ethical characteristics of the people that are doing them. So that is the thing that we have to be very cautious of as a community out there. So, that is the thing that we have to be very cautious of as a community out there. I want you to keep your eyes open and make sure that we all get represented properly because that's very important. My responsibility to you doesn't stop here. It stops when I'm no longer in this seat, which is not until two thousand eighteen, at the very least. All right? So, um, for that, I want to tell you that I was not in favor. I would never have been in favor. There were multiple council members who have been with this city for years, not in favor. And they were ve- very much a disagrees. The first time this has ever been done in this city in its thirty-four years. So, it's a, it's a very, very disconcerting change in, in the direction this city's going. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Yeah, so, uh, first of all, I would like to welcome back Chief. I know you're sitting over there real quiet, but welcome back. Um, and I want to say thank you to the, uh, Chief Abdul is not here right now, but, um, like Councilmember Guyva was talking about the fire and, um, you know, we get updates and everything. And I was reading, uh, one of the updates. I think in total, it was over four hundred firefighters that were out there putting that fire out. And so, I just want to thank all those firefighters and also the police department, all the officers that went up there and assisted in evacuating people from their homes and, uh, working together. So, uh, thank you for that. Also, um, as Mayor Pro Tem said, I was at the, um, at the Joint Task Force meeting earlier today. And one thing that we talked about, uh, actually, Representative from, uh, Lake Paris State Park was sitting right next to me, and he brought up the fact that the Olympics in twenty twenty-eight are, are, it's official. And, um, we're gonna do, uh, rowing and canoeing here at State, uh, at the, um, uh, Lake Paris State Park. So, I think that's gonna be amazing. It's gonna help the entire area, Moreno Valley, Paris, all the surrounding cities. Uh, so, look out for that. I know we still have a while, about ten years, but it'll be here before you know it. And, uh, finally, uh, we also brought this up earlier, but El Grito. Uh, that's gonna be a huge event. There's a lot of people, a lot of different organizations, a lot of bodies partnering up. They're all down here. Um, you know, the city of Moreno Valley, uh, you, Moreno Valley Unified School District, uh, Dr. Kedziora, uh, and, uh, Jesus Olgin were here earlier today. Moreno Valley College, um, the Mexican consulate. So, this is a huge deal. This is a big event. I know, uh, they do one in L A., then they do them in Mexico. And as Mayor Pro Tem said in the meeting, this is an American, uh, thing. This is an American event, a celebration of, uh, independence. So, uh, definitely look forward to that. It'll be there at the college off of, uh, La Salle and, uh, I believe it's Cremaria. Um, it's right back there. So, uh, come out. It'll be September fifteenth from six P M. to nine thirty P M. So, they're going on pretty late. There'll be food, a couple celebrities, uh, local celebrities, actually, and, uh, really looking forward to that. So, I just want to thank the staff, uh, ultimately. You know, you guys are out there doing the actual hard work. We're just up here, just sitting down. So, uh, just keep doing what you're doing, and we appreciate everything that every single one of you does. And, uh, let's, let's keep the momentum going.
Have, uh, thank you, Councilmember Cabrera, for those comments. We have, uh, Mayor Pro Tembaca.
Well, I want to say, um, welcome back after our, uh, summer hiatus. Even though we weren't having city council meetings, we're very, very busy this summer in getting work done, projects done, programs coming to Moreno Valley. And one of them is, um, as Councilman Cabrera mentioned, El Grito. It's a big event. And we're hoping for thousands of people to be there. And, um, want to congratulate the Fourth of July winners that we had today. It, it's, um, I love the Fourth of July. And I, I know that there's a lot of people competing for the trophies and, and the plaques. But, um, I just want to say congratulations one more time to the winners. Tomorrow is the State of the City event, and, uh, this is a Moreno Valley Chamber of Commerce event. And I was told today that it's sold out because I'm trying to get some tickets, but it's completely sold out. And it, it, it makes me very, very happy to know that so many people are interested in our, um, achievements, our feats, everything that's going on. And, um, Momentum Movial, it's, you know, it's alive and well. It's a living, breathing document, and we keep moving forward, and our city is moving forward. And I know that we have, uh, some people that are against a lot of things that we're doing, but it's okay. It's okay. Just keep moving forward and don't get sidetracked. Keep going, jump over the obstacles, and we'll be okay. And, um, if, uh, you don't have tickets, the Alessandra Room will be open. There's chairs there, and you can watch the simulcast. Is that right, Michelle?
There'll be light refreshments.
And light refreshments. So, uh, please come down. It's a great event. I'm very excited for the good things that are happening in Moreno Valley. So, see you tomorrow.
And, um, just to piggyback off on the State of the City, again, it is tomorrow, eleven thirty in the morning. I'm really excited to be delivering, uh, the State of the City, um, speech. Uh, we have a great event, uh, worked out. I want to thank really all the staff, especially the media team, our P I O., Steve, everybody actually, because you all chimed in, uh, in, uh, providing, um, updates uh, towards our strategic plan Momentum Movial, which is our vision for the city. And so, I just want to say, uh, thank you so much for, for all of that help and support. Um, I also want to mention that, uh, we are going to have a special guest, uh, tomorrow. As an honorary guest, uh, tomorrow, we have the forty-first mayor of Los Angeles, uh, former mayor Antonio Viegosa. He'll be attending our State of the City, and he's also a candidate for governor as well. And then, we're going to also have, uh, various other individuals too. So, it's gonna be a really, really fun, great event. Uh, if you can't get in, uh, to the actual State of the City, I mean, there's the, again, the Alessandra Room. There's light refreshments there. You'll be watching it live, which is gonna be great. I want to say I was, it is true, I was Mr. Crayola, okay, during the first day of school. Okay, it was pretty funny. But, um, but it was really fun, and it was nice to see the kids, and they were really, really happy and wanting to, uh, take pictures. And I got to see a lot of kids that were really sc- I mean, it looked like they were just scared, you know, scared for their lives. But I, I rest, you know, I have some of them, I walked them to their class, and it's, it's gonna, it's going to be okay. And, um, I want to also mention that we're doing a lot of partnerships. And I believe that that's what we want to do as a council, is a lot of partnerships, uh, bring people together, bring different agencies together. Uh, for example, Moreno Valley College, um, I really want to commend Dr. Steinbach, uh, the, the new college president there because she really, um, ha- is, has really embraced, uh, partnering with the city in Moreno Valley. For example, the, um, El Grito event, you know, September fifteenth. She opened her doors, uh, to have the El Grito event, um, at Moreno Valley College. And it's going to be a cultural festival that's going to celebrate, uh, unity, diversity, everything. So, it's gonna be a really, really great event. She also, um, has been really open, you know, with, um, again, with the partnership uh, now that the city has with the Promise Initiative, where we're, where we will be, uh, sponsoring and helping, uh, students, uh, for their first year of college. I also want to say that I'm really, really excited for the Cinema Culturas, the Latin Film Festival, that, uh, we're going to have in Moreno Valley for the first time. We never had a film festival, and so, I really want to thank, uh, Councilmember Cabrera, uh, for really, uh, helping with that matter and, and, and really being, you know, rolling up his sleeves and, and really being on the committee and, and, and trying to, to get this going. I also want to mention that I'm super excited for the expansion of the library services, especially. Um, a lot of people have been asking about it. You know, when is the new library going to open? And so, this is gonna provide more story time, more teen nights. I mean, it's going to be a really, really great thing. And we're a large city. It's time, uh, to put ourselves on the map and to really have these types of services. So, that's why I really like that film festival, uh, you know, that we're now going to be able to fix our roads. And all of the partnerships that we're doing with various, uh, agencies is really, really important. So, I'll go ahead and leave it at that. Um, also, please take advantage of the interpreters that we have as well. So, that's, this is an added service, um, you know. So, I think they already left already, but, so, anyways, uh, thank you so much. Uh, and looking forward to tomorrow's event. Also, there will be an economic summit at nine thirty in the morning. Has that sold out? Okay, well, that's, that, that already sold out. So, all right, thank you. Well, this meeting is adjourned at nine thirty-seven P M.